This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levinson.
Here.
Samori.
Present.
Santos.
Here.
Whit.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for pledge of allegiance. Oh, would you guys like to lead the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on that list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard. And also, if you've got your name on the, would like to speak at the public invited to be heard, you've got a choice to either do it then or at the public hearing, but not both. So either choose to speak during the hearing part or at the public invited to be heard. Next, we have the meetings from March 13th. Are there any corrections to the minutes? May I have a motion? Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Mayor Coombs, I'm not going to vote on these minutes because I was not in attendance at the meeting.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. I would move approval of the March 13th, 2012 minutes.
All right, and I guess I won't vote because I wasn't at the meeting also. So let's vote. All right, it passes five with two no votes.
I have extensions here. Mayor and Council, we have one item that we're going to make a revision to your agenda. Item 9J in your consent agenda will now become the request to refer the Fairgrounds Marketplace through your annexation review process. If there are no objections from the council, that will become item J for your consent.
Okay. Is there any objections? Nope.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of updates under the manager's report, and the first one Dale Radamaker will introduce the special recognitions.
Mayor Combs and members of council, Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. So this evening is actually a celebration and a chance for the city council to acknowledge the work of two of our staff members, Rory Palmieri and Ian Champa, who on March 11th took some heroic actions out at Union Reservoir. And, you know, sometimes this is easily said, but the truth of the matter is truly saved five lives out at the reservoir with their quick response and quick actions. And Rory and Ian are here this evening, and Mayor, we do have a certificate that, if you could read that for Rory and Ian. I probably won't go into all the details, but I want to also acknowledge that Dan Wolford is here. He's the manager of our Parks and Open Space in Greenways, and I don't know if Dan wants to say any additional words. Just real quickly before we do the certificates, and then we'll do that.
Mayor and Council, Dan Wolford, manager of Parks, Open Space and Greenways. I'm very proud tonight to present these two gentlemen to you for their recognition. Ian Champa is a seven-year seasonal with us out at Union Reservoir, and when he's not a Ranger, he works full-time for the Adams County Public Defenders as an investigator, and Rory Palmieri has been with the city as a Ranger for 10 years. So I will say that what they did last Sunday was something that they do on a very regular basis. It's just something that happened to catch national news, and they saved the lives of five people. You know, as I was going through the incident report and reading it, this is just, it just goes to show the kind of service that they provide the citizens of Longmont, but it's no different than what our police officers and our firemen do out there. In the statement, it says, "Rory and I took off our big jackets." You know, when you saw the photograph in the paper of the Rangers, the very first question, a lot of people were saying, "Boy, those guys don't have their life jackets on." Well, they took off those life jackets, and it says right here that "Rory and I both took off our jackets and put them around the family. I drove the boat back to the dock, and Rory was using his body to cover the family with his jackets to shield them from the three-to-four-foot waves that were spilling over the bow of the boat." This is what these guys do for the city of Longmont. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Ian Champa and Rory Palmieri.
I'd like to read the...
...certificates. Certificate of appreciation awarded to Rory Palmieri for his outstanding rescue efforts on March 18th, 2012, that resulted in the savings of five...
The savings of five?
That resulted in the savings of five lives at Union Reservoir.
Certificate of appreciation awarded to Rory Palmieri for his outstanding rescue efforts on March 18th, 2012, that resulted in the savings of five... The savings of five?
That resulted in the savings of five lives at Union Reservoir.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of updates under the manager's report. And the first one, Dale Radamaker will introduce the special recognitions.
Mayor Combs and members of council, Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. So this evening is a, is actually a celebration and a chance for the city council to acknowledge the work of two of our staff members, Rory Palmieri and Ian Champa, who on March 11th took some heroic actions out at Union Reservoir. And, you know, sometimes this is easily said, but the truth of the matter is truly saved five lives out at the reservoir with their quick response and quick actions. And Rory and Ian are here this evening. And Mayor, we do have a certificate that, if you could read that for Rory and Ian. I probably won't go into all the details, but I want to also acknowledge that Dan Wolford is here. He's the manager of our Parks and Open Space in Greenways. And I don't know if Dan wants to say any additional words, just real quickly before we do the certificates, and then we'll do that.
Mayor and Council, Dan Wolford, manager of Parks, Open Space and Greenways. I am very proud tonight to present these two gentlemen to you for their recognition. Ian Champa is a seven-year seasonal with us out at Union Reservoir. And when he's not a Ranger, he works full-time for the Adams County Public Defenders as an investigator. And Rory Palmieri has been with the city as a Ranger for 10 years. So I will say that what they did last Sunday was something that they do on a very regular basis. It's just something that happened to catch national news, and they saved the lives of five people. You know, as I was going through the incident report and reading it, this is just, it just goes to show the kind of service that they provide the citizens of Longmont. But it's no different than what our police officers and our firemen do out there. In the, in the statement, it says, "Roy and I took off our big jackets." You know, when you saw the photograph in the paper of the Rangers, the very first question, a lot of people were saying, "Boy, those guys don't have their life jackets on." Well, they took off those life jackets. And it says right here that, "Roy and I both took off our jackets and put them around the family. I drove the boat back to the dock, and Rory was using his body to cover the family with his jackets, to shield them from the three-to-four-foot waves that were spilling over the bow of the boat." This is what these guys do for the city of Longmont. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Ian Champa and Rory Palmieri.
The certificate says, "Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Rory Palmieri for outstanding rescue efforts on March 18th, 2012, that resulted in the savings of five..." The savings of five? That resulted in the savings of five lives at Union Reservoir. "Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Ian Champa, Ian Champa, for the outstanding rescue efforts on March 18th, 2012, that resulted in the savings of five lives at Union Reservoir." Congratulations. Yes.
Mayor, next item on the manager's report, Chris Huffer is going to give you an update on the Alley Project. We indicated from this project, it got kicked off, that we would give you monthly updates as progress takes place, and tonight's the first of those.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. Chris Huffer with Public Works and Natural Resources, coming to you tonight just to give you a quick update for the downtown Alley Project. I'd just first like to say that the project is going very well. We've hit a few snags along the way, but nothing unexpected for a project of this size. As you may remember, we've talked about, and maybe you've seen it out there, we're starting in the 400 block, which is, in this picture, the middle in the yellow. We were starting on Fourth Avenue and moving our way up to Fifth Avenue. We're doing that in order to wrap up our construction projects, hopefully before summer concert series start and the other things that happen downtown. To date, the project started at the end of February with the removal of the Los Arcos art pieces. With the help of AIPP, that went very smoothly. Then our contractor, J2, came in and started with removals of the breezeway structures, which has also gone very well. They went next one to pavement removal, and we are now currently working with Excel to renew their gas line in the alley. And just this week, LPC has started following up right behind them. J2 is also working in the parking lot there in the 400 block, doing some miscellaneous structures. They've also moved out to the Fourth Avenue, where we've closed Fourth Avenue down to a single lane going westbound. That work is being wrapped up in the next couple of weeks so we can open that back up. Upcoming work, as I just said, the closure, closure of Fourth Avenue, we're looking at closing it completely to traffic April 2nd, so pavement can be put in place. And then we'll be opening it up the day after that, restoring traffic both directions and opening it up for pedestrians as well. Excel is looking to do a bore under Fifth Avenue, starting next week as well. We're looking at closing the very south end of the 500 alley so that they can bore underneath Fifth Avenue and continue their work further north. Let's see, we're also looking at closing 400 East Parking Lot the week of April 9th. We've been holding half of that open at this point in time, trying to maintain as much parking as possible throughout the project. And we have an anticipated completion date sometime in the week of May 14th, in which time we'll be moving on north to the 500 block. I just wanted to update you a little bit on some of the communication things that we've been doing with the surrounding property owners and merchants. J2, our contractor, has a public information officer, and they also have a 24-hour line that is open, a local phone number that you can call, get updates. You can also leave messages there, and they pick those messages up daily and return calls. The LDDA is working with us hand-in-hand. They are keeping the website up to date with weekly construction updates, as well as other sundry project informations out there, background and a lot of other things, renderings and so forth. Their, LDDA has put together an email list, and they're emailing out a weekly construction update also to anybody who has signed up for that. Let's see, we also have Del Ray Heiser from the DDA is working with me very closely, as well as Bill Powell from Public Works and Natural Resources. They are doing a lot of the direct communication with merchants and property owners out there. And so far, they've been doing a great job, as well as looking to work with the times call and provide information to them as well. Let's see, in the coming weeks, we're going to be moving on to the 500 block. We're also next week working with the 500 block owners and merchants, meeting with them directly. We'll also be continuing to update the websites and holding public information meetings. With that, I just have to open up with any questions that you may have at this time?
Do you have an expected date that you would start on the 500 block now?
We're looking at possibly May, the week of May 14th. So we'd be wrapping up the 400 block and starting on the 500 block.
Thank you. Any other questions? That was pertinent to me, but... All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Graham.
Mayor and Council, moving on to section six of your agenda, special reports, Kim Sugar will introduce the next item.
Good evening, Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager. Tonight, we're here to discuss a proposal that the city had received from a couple of groups within the city to develop a larger Veterans Memorial at Roosevelt Park. We have guests here tonight from the Disabled American Veterans 16 in Longmont, and also the Military Order of Purple Heart 434, Longmont. This map depicts the Roosevelt, thank you, the Roosevelt Park Master Plan. The proposal that you've received in your packet is consistent with the uses of the park to date. On the west side of the park, there has been a rose garden dedicated to veterans. And as well on the east end of the park, there is a flag there that was also dedicated to veterans. The proposal that is before you is in this area, near the existing flagpole, to add an additional five flagpoles that resemble, that represent the different, the five different branches of the service. Additionally, they're proposing a granite marker for the prisoners of war. The proposal was presented to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they approved the proposal as presented in your packet, whereas the groups that are presenting the proposal would fund the construction of the project, and then they're asking that the city would take over operation and maintenance. At this point, I would like to introduce two individuals that'll do a brief presentation and will answer any questions you may have. We have John Costelnek, Commander of the Disabled American Veterans 16 in Longmont, and then Ray Athie, Commander, Military Order of Purple Heart 434, of Longmont.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Pedro, John Costelnek, Commander, Disabled American Veterans Chapter 16, Longmont. Before you, as you've seen is our proposal, and we thought it would be a, just a fitting tribute to make the memorial to the veterans just a little bit more personalized by honoring each branch of the service. So far to date, the cost, it's going to be a two-part project. There's our end of it, which is the flags, and then the Military Order of Purple Heart, their end of it, the granite marker. The flagpole project and the lighting for the poles is going to run $15,000. As, and we're shooting for June 14th Flag Day. As of this date, we have, through funding and donations, we have required $12,000. So we have, the cutoff date to order to meet the June 14th date is May 9th. So we have a little over a month to go. I'm real confident that we'll meet our goal financially. If for some reason we don't, we'll continue to go until we do reach that goal, and it will just, you know, push the dedication back further. But citizens and corporations in Longmont have been great, and I feel very confident that we will, that we will meet our, our goal. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Would you like, how do we, how do we contribute as individuals? Where do we send a check?
For the...[1264.47][1264.47](laughter)
If you take plastic, I have it right now.
For the, for the flagpole end of it, a check can be made or donation can be made to the DAV, PO Box 1664, Longmont, 80502.
You want to give that one more time?
DAV 16, PO Box 1664, Longmont, 80502. And I'll let Ray address his, his end of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I brought a couple of images of the Purple Heart Memorial that is a replica of exactly what we will put in Roosevelt Park. This memorial is in the Veterans Cemetery in Ego, California, and I'll pass these around for you to look at. The memorials are brought in from, the red granite memorial is brought in from New Jersey or Connecticut. I can't remember where they mine the red granite. The image that you have on the screen is the memorial that we put at the Weld County Veterans Park at Bittersweet Park in Greeley. The only difference will be this white granite memorial fits the white granite of the rest of the memorials in Greeley. And here, because we don't have the restrictions of the white granite, we will go to the standard red granite that the Military Order of the Purple Heart orders nationally. Our fundraising has just got started. We anticipate that the cost will be approximately $10,000 to get the memorial ordered, engraved, shipped, and set. And with that, I'll answer any other questions. And if you'd like to contribute to this memorial, you can send it to Military Order of the Purple Heart, 509th Avenue, Number 3, in Longmont.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, I have a question, just because it wasn't specific in our packet. Are the flags that you're going to fly going to be the service flags or an American flag?
Ma'am, the, currently, the American flag that's there now, it's the, as you probably all know, it's dedicated to World War I veterans. It was originally the flagpole, a little history quickly, was in the intersection of Fourth and Main, then it was moved to Fourth and Kimbark, and now it resides at Roosevelt Park. In addition to the American flag, underneath that, we're going to fly a POW, or we're going to install a black POW MIA flag. And then the other flagpoles that'll be in a semicircle will be one for each branch of the service.
But will they be the flags of the service, though?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It'll be an Army flag, a Marine Corps flag, Navy, Air Force, and Coast Guard.
And then for, when we're looking at the maintenance, I would want to make sure that those flags are maintained in good condition, because I've seen some flags around town, the American flag is just flying in shreds, frankly, and I know that's a dishonor to our flag.
Yes, ma'am. And the, the poles that we have specified, just generally, they're, they are wind rated at 120 miles an hour, so they're going to withstand, hopefully, they won't have to be tested. And the flags are of a little higher, going through the flag company, they're of a little higher quality, designed for outdoor use. At some point, you know, with the wind, they are going to, and they run on an average, unfortunately, they're, they're not the same price for each one, each one is a little different, but on average, they are roughly $100 apiece. And it would just be, replacement will be just contingent upon, you know, whether they're tattered, might not be for a year or two.
And I would hope maybe we can work on this as individuals or ask our, someone in our city staff to look at this. Perhaps when you dedicate the memorial, we could get a new flag for, the American flag for the flagpole, and maybe get a flag that's flown over the National Capitol. And I know that Gabe probably can know how we could obtain a flag that had flown over the National Capitol, so...
We can surely entertain that thought.
I think it would be nice to do that at the same time, to honor your dedication.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. The only thing, other thing I would suggest is that if, when this is dedicated on Flag Day, we have not only the veterans, but perhaps contingent of each service, if they're so willing to be invited as well.
In our pre-planning, that is, we're working on that. Actually, each branch of the service will raise their own flag, and we'll have some, obviously, past veterans, current, current military personnel, and some, talking to the recruiters, they assured me that there'll be some future, future veterans there, plus, you know, other dignitaries in council will also obviously get an invitation.
That'd be great. So with that, I would approve the proposal as presented.
All right, let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir, for your... Thank you.
All right, it's, the first person on the list is going to be Joe Bassman and Shelley Bassman. You can choose to speak now or wait till the hearing portion, and you also have an opportunity to speak at the second public invited to be heard, so would you like to come up now?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of city council and staff, I'm Joe Bassman, 3414 Lakeview Circle, where I own the service rights. I wish to speak now about the partnership that I've experienced during the past six months. I had been planning to speak about extending the oil and gas moratorium to October 12th, 2012, but I understand that that's not to be allowed tonight. I've enjoyed working with all of you and with my Longmont neighbors, as you've led us to where we are here tonight. Oil and gas operations are poised to enter our city. Six months ago, I was very naive about the significance of this. I feel that we have all shared success along a steep learning curve. This six-month project has been informally split between the city and the citizens. The city council and city staff have focused on a legal, procedural, and regulatory framework to protect our well-planned city and its citizens. Our community of citizens has contributed significant research, factual, and scientific data, and the experience of those of us who are directly affected by the impacts of oil and gas wells in our front-range neighborhoods. We've all educated the public within our separate areas of expertise. The city and community have learned together, and in the end, we share common goals. The citizens want our parks, environment, health, and values to be preserved regardless of the legal threats of preemption by the State Attorney General and the COGCC. The city remains reluctant in the red areas of preemption, but they have pushed the envelope in the yellow areas. Admirably, neither the city nor its residents are willing to tolerate egregious, open, toxic evaporative waste pits within our boundaries. I, for one, would like to give a hand to the city council, city staff, city attorney, and especially to Gordon Pedro for all that you've done. As we all move forward, I know that we are on the same page. We all have in our hearts the best interests of our fair city, our environment, our families, our economy, our neighbors, and our visitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Shelley Bassman?
Good evening. This is to the mayor and councilmen and councilwomen.
Please state your, your name and address first.
My name is... My name is Richard Jacobson. My address is Six Sharp Court, Longmont, Colorado. The God of heaven has sent me to speak. I don't want to be here, and it's a fearful thing to speak before one's city fathers, but I must. I come to you in the spirit of Micah, Chapter 6, Verse 8, in the Holy Bible. Quote, "O man, what doth the Lord require of thee but to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with thy God?" What the newly-elected mayor has done, with all due respect, by signing a list to agree with changing marriage, is to belie his duty and character of his office, of mayor, of a city traditionally steep in wholesome Christian values. And I would submit not only Christian values, but honest, common sense values that makes a community wholesome and good for hard-working moms and dads to raise their families in. How many people have moved to Longmont because they know it's a good place to raise their children? This brazen act by a young inexperienced mayor has and will plant an evil seed into the hearts of our young children and young adults. It has already caused an uproar and must be remedied for us to continue on to be a spiritually, emotionally, and physically healthy community. The mayor says this act, unagreed upon by his fellow councilmen, won't hurt or influence his marriage. This, I would submit, certainly is a selfish and childish response.
Mr. Jacobson? I'm going to have to interrupt you. We don't do personal attacks, and what you're doing is a personal attack on the mayor. Now, it's, you're within your right to say, you know, I disagree with what Mayor Coombs may or may not have done, but you're using terminology that is not appropriate. So, I would just caution you that we don't, you know, we ask for everyone to be respectful of the councilmembers, of the staff, and of each other as residents and the public. So, I would caution the use of the terminology that you're using. You know, it's, again, it's our right to say that you disagree with what he's done, but using evil and other terminology like that is not appropriate.
I'll finish, if I may.
One minute.
Okay, thank you. This will have long-lasting consequences. Our city will become desolate and full of crime, for if you sow an evil seed, it will produce an evil crop. In conclusion, I am here to earnestly plead with the mayor, first...
Your time's up. Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Diane Wood, followed by Carol Liner.
Do you have copies here? If you want to give it to the per, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm Diane Wood from 6914 St. Germain Road. And I have long been concerned about the risk of increased air traffic that will accompany major improvements planned for the Longmont Airport. On December 18, 2011, a pilot had an emergency landing on unusually busy Hoover Road near Rogers Grove. No investigation was made as to why this extreme stunt was necessary. Did the pilot fail to fill the fuel tank? Was required maintenance properly performed? It was most fortunate, no one was injured or killed. Then on May, on March 23rd, 2012, we had a mid-air collision over Longmont resulting in two deaths. What if the tumbling aircraft had crashed into a home or school in this densely populated town? The master plan to extend the runway at Vance Brand in Longmont projects a doubling of aircraft operations over the next few years. That plan does nothing to implement flight controls or even simple record-keeping at our airport. With takeoffs and landings occurring once a minute, helicopters and skydivers filling the air, mid-air collisions will occur more frequently. There is no flight control at Vance Brand. Even instructors based at other airports bring students to Longmont's airport to practice touch-and-go maneuvers. Why? No one at Longmont Airport watches his or her operations or their skills or behavior. The FAA identifies an airport air influence zone. Longmont has seen fit to build six schools within that zone. Risky. You must agree that having novices learn to fly over your home and school is unnecessarily risky. FAA does not require private aircraft owners to carry liability insurance, and many do not. Few buy insurance adequate to compensate the victims of a crash. You cannot drive your car without adequate insurance, but your small aircraft not need to be insured, so why bother? The Longmont Airport is not a significant moneymaker for the city. Longmont Council can boost our local economy by bringing in light industry and high-tech companies. But anyone who tries to argue that this airport is key to companies considering a move to Longmont is out of touch with the real world of business. Please recognize the risks to each of us presented by increased air traffic over Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Carol Liner, followed by Susan Price.
My name is Carol Liner. You're a very close mayor. Mayor and City Council members, I am a business owner out at Longmont Airport. I have been out there at the airport in business since 2001, and we've been airplane residents of the airport since the early 90s. The airport is an asset to this city. It offers transportation, health and safety, for instance. We have a major fire going on southwest of Denver. If it's west of Boulder, or like it was a couple of years ago where I lost my home, or west of Longmont, or up in this area, you would see some of the single-engine firefighters coming into Longmont Airport for fuel and, and to refill their firefighting fuel liquids. We use it for education. There are often kids from various preschools and, and elementary schools that come out and learn about airplanes. And Tim Barth does a fantastic job of giving the kids tours. It's also an economic asset. The airport is a real benefit to the city, and it's hard for me to understand why the general public, many of the general public, does not realize that the master plan is just that, it's sort of a blueprint. It does not mean that everything in that blueprint is going to get done in the next five years. It only gives us the opportunity to think about it, and if the need arises, do something with, with the plan. Without things in the, in the master plan, we can't get block grants from the FAA to do these things. Furthermore, I have read that one reason for not approving the master plan with the runway extension is that while it might make it more safer, it will increase the use, it will increase the noise, it will increase the traffic. By the same reasoning, maybe we should not widen two-lane roads, because when you widen three-lane roads, even though it makes it safer to drive on them, it also leads to more traffic, more noise, and more pollution. The airport needs to grow with the city, and it helps the city to grow. So, I encourage you to adopt the master plan, including the runway extension, as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Price?
I guess I can wait till the second reading.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Anthony Cleaver. My address is 229, Number 33E, Longmont. I'm here to speak as a businessman in favor of the airport. Two points, one is the economic issues. The plane I fly, I purchase approximately 2,000 gallons of aviation fuel every year. I rent a hangar, I get maintenance done, purchase food. I'm going to guess my economic impact would be somewhere around $18,000 a year, and I'm a very small businessman flying out of there. The second issue that I'd like to address is the extension of the runway. In 30 years I've been flying, I've had one engine fail on me in flight, I've shut one engine down as a precaution because it was going to fail, and lost one engine on takeoff. And in each one of those instances, I really didn't want to have to consider that running out of runway coming down to land, so I urge you to consider adopting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Good evening. I'm Edward Hollister. Is Mayor Coham, should I go ahead? The first name you read was not there, or did not appear again. Mayor, I think we had that probably my name last time, we did this. So, ladies and gentlemen of the Longmont City Council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Edward Hollister. I live at 6124 Treburton Drive. I am a lifetime resident of Boulder County, and I have lived at 6124 Treburton with my wife for the past 28 years. I am here to speak against the expansion of the runway. In trying to prepare for making my comments to you, and to make them fairly concise, I went back to the old journalism, the five W's. Who, what, where, when, and why. And basically, this is what I wrote out. The who. Those for the expansion, those opposed. Those who will benefit, those who are either adversely or positively affected by the expansion, and I think very important, those who are unaware of how this expansion may or may not affect them. The what. What is the reason for the expansion? Are the reasons given what is actually going to happen? Are there any hidden agendas for or against this expansion? Is the expansion fair and just for all? The where. Is the current location the right location for the city of Longmont now and in the future? Is there or should there be consideration given as what will the effect of our airport be 20 to 40 years from now? Is the current location and the expansion detrimental or positive for residential and business growth? When? The timing of this decision? Is now the time to make this decision, or do we need more time? Do we need more opportunity to discuss? Last of all, why? Why is the expansion being made? Is it fair and equitable for those who are for the expansion, opposed, for those receiving direct benefit, and for those that are either positively or negatively affected? I ask each one of you, as I bullet point this, to ask, is it fair? Is it equitable to everybody concerned? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Hignight? Followed by Don Colson.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is David Hignight. I reside at 4615 Portofino Drive. I am urging you to line item veto that portion of the airport master plan that recommends the runway extension for Vance Brand Airport. The purpose of the 1,000-foot extension approved to date by City Council is to accommodate bigger and faster planes. Chapter 5 in the master plan makes that perfectly clear and describes the additional aircraft that the extension will allow Vance Brand Airport to accommodate. The extension will allow the airport to accommodate 90% of the piston fleet over the current 77% and 39% of the turboprop jet fleet over the current 11%. The class of the airport may not change, but the planes get bigger because of the extension. There is one thing harder to stop than a train, and that is a gravy train. This is probably the most difficult aspect of the runway extension issue councilmembers face. The airport is a perfect example of the culture of dependency. The pilots and businesses use a federally subsidized airport to fly their planes for which they pay no landing fee and pay salaries that are significantly much lower than the per capita averages in the county and state. If the airport is such a successful economic entity, why does it need federal and state funding to operate? The local aviation interest group pounds the table demanding more gravy with an extended runway that will bring bigger, noisier, and faster planes over a large segment of Longmont City and Boulder County. The above statement is not a critique of pilots' wealth. It is rather a critique of the airport's culture of dependency on state and federal spending. The Longmont Airport is not comparable to public transportation. The Longmont Airport subsidizes and supports aviators, a very small segment of the Longmont and Colorado population. Public transportation does just what it says, provides transportation to the general public. One big difference between the airport and public transportation, you don't have to own a bus to use public transportation. A longer runway means an increase in the airport influence zone. A larger AIZ means more federal control within our community. As I've said before, that is never a good thing. Are the homeowners in the increased zone in Longmont and in the county aware through plat information or disclosure documents, disclosure documents that they'll be included in the AIZ? Please vote no on including the runway extension in the AMP. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Don Colson, 341 Grant Street. The folks you see behind you are your constituents. Many have voted for you, and perhaps many did not, but that doesn't change the fact that they are your constituents. During your various election campaigns, I'm fairly sure that each of you made a promise along the line that you would listen to your constituents. But unless something changes tonight, you'll be casting another dreary, tedious 4-3-5-2 vote against the resolution to extend the existing moratorium on fracking another six months. You'll be voting in direct opposition to a significant population, and so I ask you simply one question, why? City staff thought they could achieve their goals of a set for them in the first three months, and then it took six, or it will take six. And while they may, but the need for an additional six months moratorium has nothing to do with staff time, its, or their timeframe. Instead, it has everything to do with rapidly changing rules of engagement at all levels of government and new protections for municipalities throughout Colorado. So, why not seize the moment? A few months ago, the president of TOP was quoted as saying that the reason he's seeking permits now is to avoid more stringent regulations down the road. If this doesn't speak to the heart of the problem and scream loud and clear that his, the time is his enemy and is our ally. So, for those in council opposing an extended moratorium, please tell us precisely and in no uncertain terms why you are supporting the drilling industry. You are not supporting staff because this issue is not their issue, and you are certainly not supporting a vast number of your constituents, so this issue is yours to decide and no one else's. And what about the fine art of governing? Has council considered alternative timeframes? And here I speak strictly for myself, I'm a single, unaligned, nonpartisan, independent voice. I'm not a... I'm not alive with anybody. One voice only. But if I can't get six months moratorium, I'll take four or five. Is there no room for negotiation or compromise on this issue? Must everything be black and white, 5 to 2, 4 to 3? Think of the message a 7-nothing vote in favor of extension would send to the oil and gas voice. Something along the line of, "We're mad as hell, and we refuse to be pushed around." So I ask for your support of an extended moratorium, and most importantly, the reasoning behind your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. It's H-E-C-Z-K-I?
K-O.
K-O, okay.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Eric Hitzke. I live at 9749 Schlegel Road here in Longmont. I live a mile away from the airport. I'm a pilot, and I do fly a vintage airplane. Number one, I'm in favor of the Airport Master Plan as it is. There's been talk about living next to an airport, about property values going down. I wish that was true, because mine has gone up 16% the last assessment, and it's never gone down in 16 years that I've lived here. I've heard rumors that those of us that fly must belong to a millionaire's club. I don't know of any millionaires. I sure am not. There are many improvements that need to be made to the airport, not only to the runway length, but such items as an RCO, more better lighting, turning on the original rotating beacon. And once again, I support the Airport Master Plan. How much time I got left?
Plenty of time.
Pardon? Okay. A little story about positive uses of general aviation airplanes. 1989, I lived in San Jose, California, and there was a, people may or may not remember the Loma Prieta earthquake. All the coastal towns there were cut off. The only way to get in there was by air. And I was with a group of people, about 20 of us, spent two days flying and supplying some of the small towns that had airports that were still open. And people were pretty happy about what we did. But once again, I support the Airport Master Plan.
Thank you, Eric. Dan Berry. Followed by Howard Morgan.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dan Berry. I live at 930 Champion Circle. I live underneath the pattern to the Longmont Airport, and I chose to do that on purpose. I'm kind of a rogue pilot, and by, I've heard pilots of Longmont have been discredited. To be a rogue pilot, I've actually had some of the highest security clearances this government offers to protect our warfighters in this world. To do that, they have to actually go back and look at my background. And so far, they haven't been able to find my criminal record. My driving records are clean. All my background is clean. So I believe that birds of a feather do flock together, and the pilots that you do have at the Longmont Airport are very responsible in what they do. What I ask of you tonight is, as leaders of a community, is what are your responsibilities that's incumbent upon you is to hold the larger questions open? And by closing any of the conversations in the Master Plan, doing any kind of light on vintos, creates censorship, which closes those future conversations. And so I ask you to pass the Master Plan, move it forward as written, and let's continue to study and leave this conversation open. Thank you very much. I support the airport.
Thank you. Howard Morgan. Followed by Jim Beniston.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Howard and Morgan, 1932 Amethyst Drive, Longmont. I didn't come to talk about this point, but let me say that we hear this bigger airplane thing continuously. And over the last two years, we've told the population through presentations, conversations, newspaper articles, that the airport is weight limited. It will be weight limited no matter what we do. And by saying the airport is weight limited, I mean the runway, the taxiways, the ramp. It isn't gonna change. There aren't gonna be any bigger airplanes than what we have now. Which is not what I came to talk about, but what I'd like to impress on you is the aspect of business aviation that's in this town. The last time I spoke, I told you about five new companies that have come to the area here that rely on the airport. And tonight, I brought an example out of the newspaper that is very good, and that the headlines are Micron substantially adding to Longmont's economy. Now, Micron is on Clover Basin Drive, close to the airport. Their headquarters are in Boise, Idaho. They have an aviation department. They don't travel back and forth by Greyhound bus, rent a car, motorcycle, train. They come by business airplane. This company, right now, has 140 employees. And this article tells you that they're expanding to 240. And it also mentions salaries in the $80,000 range. Now, if you take some base numbers, like 200 employees at $80,000, that's $16 million in salaries, not to mention what the company spends on other things. And the airport improvements will attract companies like this, which I think would be excellent for the economy. So that I would urge you to pass the Master Plan so we can get along with making the improvements and make the city more attractive to companies like this that will spend money here and increase the economy. Thank you. And I'll leave this with...
Thank you, Howard.
Jim Binkston, 2321 Calais Drive, Longmont. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I really support the airport and what it's doing. The Master Plan has taken a lot of time and study and thought into it. And to go ahead and scrap that would be a real tragedy. And speaking of tragedies, we did have a tragedy at the airport last Friday when the airplanes collided. Two people died in it. And any time you have to die, it is a tragedy. And we had four news vans out of the airport reporting all this. And after the airport had electricity provided back to it again, which the city did a fantastic job getting the electricity restored out there, I went down to Denver for the weekend. And on I-25 and I-70, there was a motorcycle accident down there. An individual died on I-25, and there was a white sheet draped over him. And there wasn't one news van down there reporting that. The sensationalism we get from the press some days of what happens in aviation doesn't correlate with real-life experiences. And I just want to say, I hope we don't turn a tragedy into disaster and not approve the Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Patty Gruder. I live at 1932 Amethyst Drive. I moved to Longmont for the airport. It would be a tragedy if we do not do this Master Plan. I have flown all over the United States as a pilot and as a passenger, and to different airports. And we have, when we moved here, this town has grown since we've lived here. And I've seen wonderful improvements in our town. But our airport doesn't expand any, and it doesn't grow. And there are other airports, or other towns, rather, that there are airports, or the towns are smaller than ours, and they have incredible airports. We do need this Master Plan. And I would just like for you to think about it and pass the bill so that we could have it.
Thank you, Patty. Glenn Rewitz. Followed by Harold Cosmore.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Glenn Rewitz, and I live at 55301 Erie Drive. I really appreciate the City Council considering the Master Plan, and I urge you to vote for it. And as a pilot, I like the option of having a longer runway. That gives me a lot more options if things happen and they don't go quite as well as they should. And so I just urge you to vote for it for increased safety and also increase the possibility of a better economy. Drew, the airport.
Thank you, Glenn.
Harold Cosmore, from 12826 Waterbury, Council and Mayor. I'd like to just go forward with the Master Plan, which will be going forward with Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Collins. Followed by Creighton Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeff Collins, 3159 Nelson Road. During the year that this Master Plan's been going along, the council has consistently blocked or ignored any points of view that oppose the airport expansion. So I won't spend my time objecting to it. I'll simply review the arguments in favor of it. At the March 13th council meeting, there were five council members present, and I asked the council members why they are supporting the Master Plan. Councilmember Witt said she feels that the expansion is good for Longmont. Mayor Pro Tem Santos gave us his reason. He thinks that the pilots that operate out of Longmont are not wealthy. The other three council members don't have a reason at all. In other forums, the council members have expressed views that the Vance Brand is like a public infrastructure, like a road. But this comparison fails for three reasons. Roads are paid for the vast majority of their costs by the people that use them through gas taxes. The expansion of Vance Brand will be paid for the most part by people who do not use the airport. The primary use of roads is for the benefit of the entire community. Vance Brand is mostly just a hobby for 300 people, most of whom don't even live in Longmont. Roads are essential for the economic development of an area, but we have no evidence at all that Vance Brand brings any economic benefit to Longmont. We have no evidence for this. If Vance Brand were to close tomorrow, the state, the county, and in all likelihood, Longmont, would not see any significant impact to its economy. If you have any evidence to the contrary, please share it with us, because I haven't seen it yet, and I have studied the Master Plan in great detail. I've also discussed it in great detail with J.A aviation and C.DOT Aeronautical Division, and they all agree with me. Thank you. The Master Plan gives no information at all about the economic benefits we can expect from expanding the runway. Not one word is mentioned on that subject at all. Again, if you have any information about the benefits of expanding the runway will bring to Longmont, or the county, or the state for that matter, please share it with us. We have not seen it. It is not in the Master Plan. The Master Plan does show that the airport generates some jobs and some economic activity. Can't deny that. There are 72 minimum wage jobs at the airport, but nobody has asked where these 72 people live. So nobody has any idea how much these jobs bring benefits to Longmont. And there are 7 billion annual sales by airport businesses, but nobody has asked where these businesses spend their money. So nobody knows where these benefits come. Many pilots have testified here that extending the runway will make the airport safe. But we must reject this argument, because if it's true, it means you, the city, are operating an unsafe airport. I can't believe that. Mr. Mayor, you and the council have a responsibility for operating the existing airport. You have a responsibility for managing the airport in a responsible way. Please assure us that you have a rational reason for supporting the extension of the runway. And if you do, please share it with us.
Thank you.
Mayor Coons, councilmembers, Creighton Stewart, 10775 North 65th Street, Longmont. Nine-plus years ago, January 7th, 2003, at a City Council study session, Mayor Pirnak moved, seconded by Councilwoman Wilson, to accept the recommendation to lengthen the runway to 5650 feet at some future date. That motion failed 3 to 4. Three-plus years ago, December 9th, 2008, Councilmember Blue moved, seconded by Hanson, to include runway length in the Airport Master Plan update. That would be this update. Motion carried 5 to 1. Tonight appears Mayor Pirnak's motion nine years ago will finally pass 7-0. Same recommendation, plus 150 feet. Same Master Plan update process. Open houses reviewed of council input. But a new AAB, a new consultant, and a new City Council. Same arguments by the same adversaries, aviation interests and airport neighbors, plus or minus some players here and there. Same airport and manager. Same neighborhoods, plus some growth. What's different or missing? There's been no public deliberation by council on the public's input, the pros or the cons. Only the merits or demerits of the consultant's input have received dedicated deliberation. A true dedicated public hearing on the final draft of the Airport Master Plan that hears all sides at one time has not been provided. A public hearing, staff input, consultant input, public input, council deliberation, and then decision. A byproduct of a public hearing that includes a contentious issue like runway extension just might, instead of resulting in a rubber stamp, result in a continuation to investigate specific points not covered, to assemble missing information, and to discuss the issue in more detail. A pseudo-public hearing took place last time around at the Council January 7th, 2003 study session. By an approving vote of 7 to 0, that Sessions Airport Master Plan agenda item was open to public comment. Back in 2003, runway extension was pulled from the Master Plan because concern for increased traffic prevailed, and the general community's need for extension was not established. The general community's need for extension still has not been established, and increased stack traffic is still an issue. Yet a previous council decision, based on potential traffic and unsubstantiated need, is about to be overridden.
Thank you. Thank you, Creighton. David Schenk, followed by Tom Lang. Might be David Schenk.
David Schenk, Fox 464, Longmont. I'd like to, what I wanted to say was, I support the Master Plan as it's written. I think it's a good document. I'd like to see the council approve it. I would like to correct something that was said earlier, and that was that the funds, the federal funds that support the airport do not come from general taxpayer funds. They come from airport user fees. Primarily, fuel taxes on the fuel that goes through airplanes. All the big jets, all the little airplanes, pay a huge tax on their fuel. And that's the primary source of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Lang. Followed by Dave Cupp.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Tom Lang, 1823 Rappahoe Drive here in town. A pilot, and I'm on the advisory board for the airport. And I just wanted to say, we've put a lot of time and effort into this and had a few contentious discussions, but I think we're all in agreement that the plan as it's written is a very good one. I think the airport is a vital part of the state and national aviation infrastructure. More importantly, it's an integral part of our community. I think this plan, as Mrs. Leonard pointed out, is a plan. There's no allocation of funds at this point, but I encourage you to pass it as written, because that way, when these funds, if these funds come available, we know where they're going. And I just, I'd like to, J.A aviation did a really good job as a consultant, and I thought our board did a pretty good job. And I encourage you to pass the Master Plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Uh, Dave Cup at two-twenty-nine Airport Road. I've been a hangar owner and tenant at Longmont Airport, uh, for the last eleven years and, um, I want to say upfront that I support the master plan as written and, um, also got a couple other points. Um, I do believe that the airport is a, uh, a public facility, just like the highways. I've flown over a hundred kids, the bulk of them, uh, from the Longmont community out of that airport and, uh, almost every one of them was their first ride in any kind of aircraft in the EAA Young Eagles program. Um, there's five thousand, uh, airports that are within one hundred, one thousand mile radius of Longmont and, uh, I can get to any one of those and far more economical than any four-wheel, uh, motor vehicle that I have. I can get thirty-five miles per gallon and I can take a thousand mile trip in, uh, in under four hours. Uh, that same trip in my, uh, car would be, uh, nineteen hours. And, uh, and so I, it is a highway in the sky to me and many of the other pilots that are out of Longmont can do the same thing. Um, again, that, uh, remember those other communities or the other five thousand airports that are out there can also access Longmont in the same way to come here. So I, it's very difficult to, to directly measure the economic benefits of it, but uh, clearly whenever I'm out of town, I'm spending money in those communities and that's what's happening when they come here. Uh, one of the comments on, uh, we have an uncontrolled airport. It's actually a self-announced airport. Uh, it's, this is not something that would be included in the master plan. It's not, um, our choice on whether or not we have, uh, a control tower. That's based on, uh, what the FAA deems appropriate based on amount of traffic. In our many airports, uh, in our community, in the near, near this community that are much busier, uh, that would certainly be, uh, uh, in line for a control tower long before we are. Again, just like to close by saying that I'm in total support of the master plan. I think that, uh, there was a great opportunity to input to it, uh, not from just the tenants, but the community. And I, in eleven years I've been here, this is the best written one I've seen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dave. Ron, uh, Brennensel. It's very difficult to read some of this printing. I think it's B E R. Brenzel. Oh, is it a K? We should have to type these.
Is it, is it working?
Yes.
Uh, Ron Brenzel, one-two-one-nine-one, North Sixty-first, Longmont, Colorado. Good evening. Wow, this has been a long process. It's hard on us. Um, I'm a pilot at the Longmont Airport. I have a small airplane. I don't have a dog in the hunt. I don't own a hangar. I don't have a business that relies on aviation, but I really, really, really like it. The master plan has been well constructed. It defines what the airport should be. It clearly defines the parameters of the airport. It, it sets forth what the Longmont Airport can be given the demographics and the economics of the area. It doesn't, we've, we've figured out we're not going to have seven forty-sevens. Um, it's practical, it's economical, it's sound, and it's in the best interest of the city and, and in the best interest of the airport. You know, it's interesting to me, the mantra of the naysayers has not changed at all by the rhythm of the facts. You know, you can, you can read the plan and it's fairly clear, but we still hear about things that are gonna happen that simply are not true. I think that you far understand this way better than I do and I've had a great learning experience coming to all these meetings. Um, it's very interesting to me how a very myopic view can be so unclear. Uh, I really urge you to approve the master plan, but in a greater way, I urge you to implement it. You know, we have the opportunity to have probably the best B-two airport in the state of Colorado. We already have the biggest B-two airport in the state of Colorado by the folks who use it, which is really to me very, very significant. We have an airport that is used, if there's three hundred and forty airplanes at the airport, which I think that's about the number that JVA has said to us, that means we have maybe six hundred, seven hundred thousand people that actively use the Longmont Airport, not counting the people that work there. If the, if these people get saved, there's no economic benefit to a thousand people actively using something on a daily basis. They're from another planet, thank you. This is a very valuable part of the city of Longmont that I enjoy, that I want to continue to use, and I think should be properly developed. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back one, could I miss one?
I'm Ted Kerilak. I live at fifteen thirty-ninth Avenue. Get up for the expansion. I've been flying out of this place for sixty years.
Thank you, Ted. Um, I think it's a Diane, it's a D. Oh, okay. Thanks.
I'll work on my penmanship. Good evening, Mayor Coons, council members on Diane Renicki, fourteen thirteen Wild Rose Drive here in Longmont. Um, I've lived at my home for, coming up on ten years now, and prior to that, I lived in another home just off of Airport Road as well. Both homes are in the flight pattern. I chose my homes there. I chose to live there for a couple reasons. The schools, the close proximity to IBM when I was working there, as well as our glorious views. The fact that we have an airport in our backyard is an added benefit. Um, I also, my interest in the airport, I currently own and operate Flight Deck Grill, which is a mobile cafe that is seasonal out at the airport and we provide, uh, breakfast and lunch services to pilots as well as anyone that comes in out of the, um, off the streets from the public. It's not just servicing the airport. We just completed our third season, um, the end of October last year and we're getting ready to open up with our fourth season. Um, I have to share with you, each season's gotten better and better, so we do feel that we are a benefit to the airport as well as to the economy. Um, we're generating positive, uh, tax revenue, a lot of positive community with people that come out to the airport, um, a, a lot of fun things that are happening out there. If you haven't been out there lately, I would encourage you to come and visit. Um, my little speech tonight has got a little bit of a different twist, positive. I'm not gonna go down all the paths that I've gone down already that everybody else has beaten, but I would like to, um, say thanks and recognize the team that has actually worked on the, um, master plan. This plan started about two years ago. It's been a long two years, as Ron Brenzel had mentioned. Um, a lot of time, effort, energies, meetings, um, community meetings, um, people coming here, public to be heard, different forums that have been, um, made available to the public. Um, lots of information out on the internet, lots of opportunities for people to express their opinions and bring their feedback forward. Um, I, I think that, and I speak on behalf of a lot of people that are in this room tonight, that the team that worked on this between JVA, the city, um, the airport management board, as well as Tim Barth, our airport manager, and feedback from the community as well as you folks, I, there's been a lot of tireless efforts and hours put into that and I think they've all done a great job. So I just want to say thank you to them. I support the master plan and I would hope that you would as well when you vote on that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Paul Tiger, followed by Gail Allen.
Greetings. Paul Tiger, four-five-two Dixon. Um, I'm gonna take us a different route. Uh, it's the route that I wrote you about a few weeks ago and then it says I have about two hundred signatures right now, uh, from people in my neighborhood, um, and we know that they live there 'cause I went to their doors, um, uh, to get a, a light put up at the intersection of, uh, um, Third and Alpine. I don't even remember where I am anymore. Um, and, uh, it's, uh, uh, I, I have the sense of, by the way, two hundred is, uh, signatures is only because I'm lazy. Um, but, uh, people have actually come to me and called me up and asked me if they could sign on. Thing is, is that I know that, uh, I've looked at the intersection and I realized that that's gonna be a pretty difficult thing there. We might spend like a million bucks there trying to figure that all out. Here's the thing, it doesn't really cost anything to take down the fifty-five mile an hour speed limit signs and put up something more suitable, maybe forty, forty-five. I was out there with Officer Sisson, uh, when he was taking measurements the day after the accident, uh, thinking that this actually might become a fatality and a vehicular homicide. Um, many officers that I talked to while I was standing there with him, we witnessed two near hits. Um, and you know, people weren't paying attention or something, there's a cop car right there. Hello? So the thing is, is that really the thing, you can't sense how fast people are coming at you. Let's not just knock it down. Let's not wait for all the traffic studies. We're having a traffic study that's been going on there for the sixteen years that I lived there. Every two days, there's an accident. Every few, uh, days, somebody is going to the hospital and then do we have fatalities? Let's not, let's not go there. Let's just take down the fifty-fives and put up a forty and that's simple. Then go have your traffic study. We're having one. It's a live traffic study. Um, I'd, uh, I'd like to also talk to you about, uh, the, uh, I, I've mentioned this before, uh, in Roth Rockdale Park, we have, uh, uh, the trees are being cut down, uh, six more trees were cut down in the last few weeks and it appears to be that it's workers from the Saint Verain, um, uh, school district, uh, that are cutting down trees in the city park. So I'll, uh, get with the folks in the city to talk about how we mitigate that, uh, and, uh, see the shirt? Can't be replaced. Those trees, you can't replace them with big, you know, only little spindly trees. Uh, and finally, uh, the airport. Love the airport. Go outside, do my gardening, look up, see planes, love planes. Uh, and you know, uh, I was a former, I am a former, uh, wildland firefighter. I heard somebody here mention how, uh, there are fireplanes, uh, taking off, uh, with loads there. That's not happening because they can't take off because the runway's not long enough. So if we want to help firefighters, uh, all the fires are happening, uh, in Boulder around the area, let's extend that runway.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Gail Allen, followed by probably Steve Allen, it's an S. Allen. Go ahead.
Hi. Uh, Gail Allen, eleven twenty-seven Twin Peaks. Before we expand the runway at Vance Brand Airport, I believe we need and deserve actual facts. I talked about this at the last city council meeting. An expanded runway will allow more planes to come into Longmont Airport for pilot training, to practice takeoff and landings, and to fill up their fuel tanks. How much more air traffic will a longer runway attract? Is it safe? I believe the airport enterprise has not done their due diligence to collect actual data and present you actual facts. Do you, mayor and city council, have all the facts you need to make an informed decision on runway expansion? What fundamental facts do I think we need to know? One, how many planes currently come into our airport? How can we measure increases in airport use? The airport needs to purchase an airplane operations counter to actually count how many times planes take off and land. Two, a fact that you already know, hundreds of residences west of Hoover Road are negatively impacted by airport noise. Before we can control airport noise, we need to quantify it. The airport needs to purchase a noise decibel machine, rotate it throughout the neighborhoods in the airport influence zone. Then you'll have a better grasp of the actual noise impact and future changes. Uh, three, the airport needs to have an airport manager on the airport grounds seven days a week to enforce violations and handle emergencies. Fourth, after the horrific plane clash, crash last Friday, the Times Call reported that this was the second mid-air collision in the Boulder County in just two years. That's a bad track record. The Times Call article said, "Much of the local airspace is designated as uncontrolled by the FAA. In normal daytime conditions, pilots may operate without flight plans or communicating with controllers or other pilots in uncontrolled airspace." So, fourth fact, Longmont needs to find out what can we do to control our airspace? How much will it cost? None of these issues appear to be addressed in the master plan proposed to you. None of these facts are available to date. I urge city council to consider deleting runway expansion from the master plan and instead allocate the money to purchase the necessary equipment and additional human resources to collect actual data. In seven years, when the master plan comes up again, you can revisit the issue of runway expansion and make an informed decision based on facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Steve Allen, uh, eleven twenty-seven Twin Peak Circle. And before I get started, please don't start me yet, um, I just wanted to thank the mayor personally for his excellent restaurant. Um, we go there regularly and I never really got a chance to tell you how much I appreciate it and they actually know us, which is very nice. Anyway, I'm ready to start. It appears that we, as Longmont citizens, are being asked to just trust us. We know what is best for your community and a large shiny upgraded airport is just what your community needs. This in itself is very disconcerting concerning the recent air traffic problems that have occurred in Longmont. The pilot that recently used Hoover as a landing strip, the mid-air collision of two planes over Longmont. With these recent air traffic incidents, it's hard to believe a larger airport will be an asset to our community. First, we were told this upgraded airport would bring in large revenue from fuel, fuel sales to big fancy corporate jets. However, most of these fancy corporate jets would require a C-class airport and due to the fact that the FAA is not interested in expanding VVA to a C-class airport, these large revenue gains will not materialize as promised. Second, we were told this upgraded airport would attract large corporations to Longmont due to the fact that these said corporations would be able to land their large C-class corporate jets at VB. Here again, the fact that the FAA is not interested in expanding Vance Brand Airport to a C-class airport, this promise of true large-term investments into corporate buildings and, and sustainable corporate jobs will also not materialize as promised. Third, it appears that a majority of the individuals who want the airport to be expanded tout, that you should simply take the advice of the airport advisory board and JVA. They are the experts. However, if I'm not mistaken, the advisory board is the one who put together the takeoff and landing guidelines that recently, that clearly picture the pattern north of the airport to be south of Ninth Street and the Saint Verain River. Based on regular observations, if one or two planes a day follow those guidelines, I would be surprised. And just today, I watched a pilot take off and land ten times and not once did that pilot follow said guidelines. Maybe before we allow them to expand their playground, we should give them, we should get them to follow their guidelines that they put together. Expanding the airport is not the answer to Longmont's economic issues. Building a community around clear, quiet industry, clean, quiet industries and a strong retail base is. Please vote no on runway expansion. Thank you.
My name's Troy Anderson. I live at, uh, four fifty-one South Anderson Street. I'm probably, I've probably seen most of you guys for the last five years while you did the annexation and everything. Uh, you know, I'm a proponent for the airport. I think the expansion's necessary and I, I think it's a great idea and a great concept. I keep hearing there's no money in it, that the city doesn't make any money. I know you guys give away that land to put those hangars on. I had to rent one of them and I know that, you know, what do you, what do you get, seventeen cents a square or twenty-seven cents a square foot underneath all those things? That's revenue goes directly into the city, doesn't it? Isn't that right, mayor?
Yeah.
It's a lot of money, okay? Uh, my mother, I live, oh, roughly two hundred, two thou- two thousand feet off the east end of the runway. I'm probably the closest occupied house on the end of the runway. the runway. My mother's 102. Every day, she gets up, she takes her walker, she goes out in the front row, front yard if the, if it's warm enough, and she sits there and watches the airplanes. And a lot of these guys, she knows them by name. Dave Coe stopped and gave her a ride in his helicopter. You know, so it isn't, it isn't as unfriendly a thing as you might think. There's a lot of revenue comes in off of that. I build experimental airplanes. I spend a ton of money building a little airplane, maybe not a ton to most people, but 10 or $12,000 building this airplane. A lot of it comes from Home Depot and stuff like that. You know, I, I'm a corporate pilot, I fly for Western Aviation. We fly the big turbine that's out there. And what do we do with that turboprop? It's a Merlin III, it's the biggest one on the airfield. Well, in this year so far, taken two people, elderly people that had physical problems, to Bakerfield, California, done that twice. Took a heart patient up to those in Montana. We're just constantly flying people all over the country. Every weekend, we make a trip, taking people up to Williston, North Dakota. That's a scheduled flight for us, we're a 135 operation. And I know there's a lot of money that we do, and those people live right here in the community. And yet they're making that money out there, and you know that those guys make a ton of money, and they're bringing it back in here. They, and the company pays for that. So, I think, you know, that there's a lot of revenue, a lot of, a lot of money that comes out of, out of the airport for the city, that I, I hear these people that seem to have their head up under a rock or something, and don't understand, you know, that it is a real benefit to the city. Imagine, imagine if, if you're from out of state, and you come in here and you have a heart attack or something, you want to go home. You know, we're one of the ways you're gonna get home. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Neil Anderson?
Hello, I'm Neil Anderson, 451 South Anderson Street. I'm here to say that I am in support of the airport master plan, and please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Bill Hanahan, followed by Tim Cook.
Mayor and council members, I am, Bill Hanahan. And I have a hangar out at the airport. I'm in favor of the airport master plan. My personal reasons, I guess you could say they're selfish, it's to make my life a little bit safer with the longer runway. I have more options if something goes wrong. For the public, I think the advantages are the same thing. If anybody has a problem, they have more options, they're more likely to end up on airport property instead of somebody else's private property. And from the economics standpoint, I know if someone drives to Florida, for example, they're gonna use 1,500 miles of interstate highway. If I fly to Florida, I need a mile of pavement here and a mile of pavement there, and I pay about the same amount of taxes for that. So, I thank you for your support, that's all I can say.
Could you say your address, please?
Willister 39, Longmont Airport.
Oh, no, you, you have to have your physical address.
3125 Sundown Drive.
Thank you.
You bet.
Carrie Cook, followed by Tim Cook.
Thanks for listening to all of us tonight. It's a long process. What I don't understand, and I'll just make it real short, is why, um...
State address, please?
Sorry, it's 10741 North 65th Street, and I'm directly west of the airport. And I knew when I moved into this neighborhood that I was moving near a recreational airport. What I didn't know was that it was potentially gonna be pushed into being a bigger, larger airport with even more airplanes flying over my home. And so what I don't understand, and not one person has addressed, is why making money and somebody's recreation is more important than my hearing and my comfort and well-being in my home, why I have to, why I have to be subjected to a longer runway with more planes and bigger airplanes because somebody wants to make money or have more fun. So, that's all I can say.
Thank you, Carrie. Tim Cook?
Tim Cook, 10741 North 65th Street. I wanna say I'm not for the master plan. I stood back here tonight, listening to everybody here. I have, a lot of these guys are my friends, or maybe, maybe were my friends, I don't know, let's see. When is big enough, big enough? I know all these guys, they all go out, they fly their planes, they have a great time. I fly with them sometimes, I may never get to fly again, but I love the airport. I love that these guys get to fly and do all the things. We just had the guys talk about flying people out of here for health reasons. I mean, it seems like a lot of people get to do what they need to do right now. When is big enough, big enough? We're gonna make it bigger now, then it's gonna be bigger, need to be bigger again, and bigger again, and bigger again. You know, at, at what cost? I mean, you know, a lot of times I'm home on the weekends, and, and a lot of people fly their planes and they do what they're supposed to do, a lot of them don't, you know. I can't control that, I don't know that you guys can control it either, but it doesn't seem to me that anybody here has said that they can't do what they want to do the way it is. We might make it safer, we might put some improvements in there, but I don't see where the runway needs to be longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, Chris Pacheco? No, sorry. Is that you? No, no. Yeah, it's not.
Mayor and council members, my name is Christine Pasoca. I live at 10824 North 65th Street, and I have been coming to meetings for the last two years and listening to the pros and the cons. And I just want to say that I am not for the airport expansion. I think there are some good things in the master plan, but I do not think that the runway needs to be expanded. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Smith?
Followed by Strider Benson. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for putting up with all of this. I'm not gonna bore you with details and arguments and stuff, I just wanna say a couple of things that I think, I hope are a jet, objective viewpoint. The airport master plan is important to this community in ways that may not have been expressed yet. As a current neighbor to the airport, and also as a taxpayer, I wish to reiterate why the city of Longmont should vote to approve the master plan. First, the airport is important to the community of Longmont for additional revenue. If the master plan moves forward with some of the amenities shown, this may mean additional funds for the city of Longmont. With additional runway changes, more aircraft activities would amount to further activity that would increase revenue. The future is unpredictable, but this revenue is likely with additional aviation and foot traffic to the airport. I noticed in there, I'll sideline here, that there's a consideration of a restaurant. Boy, I'd spend time eating at an airport if I could watch planes come and go, and I think some of you would too. Another reason for the changes mentioned is safety. That Longmont Airport runway is actually on the short side compared to other airports in the area. With Longmont Airport being the seventh busiest airport in the state of Colorado, it would be prudent to improve our runway to further increase the safety of takeoffs and landings. This would also amount to increased public safety off both ends of the runway, as the additional length ensures that aircraft leave the ground sooner over the airport property and ascend to safer heights sooner to improve the margin of safety in case of emergencies, and to reduce noise, and to reduce noise over surrounding areas. Think about it, when a plane has a certain length of runway and it takes off, the sooner it gets airborne, the higher it goes, the less noise you hear. By the way, I'm sorry, I'm Daniel Smith from 7471 Rosina Drive. I live in hygiene, planes fly over my house all the time. And I'll leave it there, I won't say anything more. Another aspect of airport usage that may not have been considered is its use during a time of disaster and the need for emergency services. In the event that Longmont City experienced, experienced a catastrophic dilemma, requiring the need for state or federal emergency assistance, the Longmont Airport could act as a staging area for larger aircraft needing longer runway distance for safe operation. Currently, there's the little factoid here, currently the Lockheed C-130 is the only heavy fixed wing aircraft that has the ability to use a runway shorter than 4,800 feet. Think about that a second. Having came...
It lines up.
Oh, thank you very much.
Very much. Strider Benson?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Council. I was intending to come here and speak about the current Republican war against women, against healthcare, against science, against education, against the right to vote, against civil and human rights, against the working class, and particularly against fairness, truth, rationality, and civil discourse in the political process. But, a more pertinent concern has happened. I am Trayvon, 140-pound, 17-year-old boy, whose last known words were, "I'm walking fast to get away from him." His girlfriend said, "Don't walk, run." Two minutes later, neighbors called 911, and on the tape, you can hear a child screaming, "Help, help, help me!" Then a shot, bam, the boy was dead. Police took the word of the 250-pound killer that he was afraid of the child who was armed with Skittles. The leading homicide investigator was ordered by the state attorney to do not file any charges, let him go. He still is free, and he still has his gun. Forty-seven years ago, on my 21st birthday, my friend, the Episcopal priest Jonathan Daniels, was shot point-blank with a shotgun in downtown Haneyville, Alabama, by Deputy Sheriff Tom Coleman in broad daylight with at least a dozen eyewitnesses. Coleman was charged with murder and served a half hour in jail. Coleman was later acquitted by a jury of his peers. Kukulap's Klan members. Now, a half a century later, the admitted killer is not even charged with anything. He goes home with his gun, and he still walks free with his gun. Not only have Alec, the American Legislative Exchange Council, and the NRA, with millions and millions and millions of dollars in bribes, corrupted our entire society, but the blatant lies, racism, and implied violence in the public and electoral media create a public atmosphere of absolute impunity. We see the results today. Let us see if we can create a humane and civil society again as we were working on 30 or 40 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. I think, I'd like to take a 10-minute recess, we've been kinda at it since 5:30 straight, and then we'll reconvene. Mayor and council, we're now ready for, I'm assuming our Republican guide be heard was over? Yes. Okay. We're now ready for ordinances and second readings and public hearings, and the first item, A-8, is a public hearing on the annual performance report for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and prior to your public hearing, Kathy will make some remarks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kathy Fedler, CDVG Coordinator. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the results of the 2011 Performance Report on the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Program, and the Affordable Housing Fund. In 2011, we had a pretty successful year, as evidenced by the information that was attached to your communication, that outlined the various programs, projects, and activities that were undertaken in 2011. The main thing I want to point out to you, or the highlights, I guess, would be on the chart number one in your packet, which is a bar chart that shows the amount of our 2011 CDVG funding and the amount of $493,400. We received about $74,600 in program income. Added to our previous year's unexpended funds meant that we had about $1.3 million in CDVG funds that were committed in 2011. And we spent about $704,500, leaving an unspent balance at the end of 2011 of $643,400. All of that money is committed to projects and is ongoing, it just hasn't been spent yet, and we anticipate spending down a good portion of that in 2012 as we move into that fiscal year. Chart number two shows how the CDVG funds were budgeted in 2011, with 43% of our total CDVG funding going for housing-type programs, 17% for neighborhood improvement projects, 3% for community investment projects, 29% for economic development, and 8% for planning and administration. And then chart three shows how those funds were expended. So, of our housing programs, we spent 75% of what was committed for those projects, 38% of the neighborhood funding, 67% of the community investment funds, 11% of what was set aside and allocated for economic development projects, and 97% of what we had set aside for planning and administration. We, these year's funds were highly leveraged. For every dollar of the CDVG funds we spent in 2011, 95 cents came into the community in the form of other public or private funding. For the Affordable Housing Fund, for every dollar we spent, $5.65 was leveraged with other private funding, and the state grant that we got for down payment assistance, for every dollar we spent of that money, $13.95 came into the community in other public or private funding. So, there was a total of all the funds that we had committed, for every dollar we spent, a total of $3.72 came back into the community from all funding sources. We made six total loans to small businesses in 2010 and 2011 with CDBGR, which is the stimulus funds, and CDB, regular CDVG funds, and those six businesses created eight full-time jobs and six part-time jobs to date. 25% of the folks that we assisted with CDVG funds were in the 51% to 80% area median income range, 22% were, had incomes between 31% 22% had incomes between 31% and 50% of the area median income. And 23% went to assist folks that were in the 0% to 30% area median income range. Of the direct recipients that were funded, so those that we actually made loans directly to or directly assisted, 32% were female heads of household, 8% were disabled households, 14% were elderly households, and 43% were minority households. This is the, 2011 was the second year of our five-year consolidated plan, so 40% into our five-year plan. We have met 50% of our rental housing goals, 57% of our existing homeownership goals, so helping existing homeowners. We've met 25% of our homebuyer goals, so assisting folks to buy homes. 117% of the homeless services and resources assistance. 550% of our community investment goal, so obviously that one needs to be updated a little bit. And we have met 33% of the economic development goals that we set out in that five-year plan. That is the quick and dirty information that I have for you. The performance report is in its final stages. We have been taking comments for the past 15 days and hope to send in the final completed performance report, which includes the consortium, City of Boulder, City of Longmont, Boulder County, and City and County of Broomfield, on or before March 31st. So as soon as we have that final, final document, I will make sure that you all get a copy of that. Tonight's the public hearing. If there are any comments that people want to make tonight, otherwise, they can direct comments directly to me through the rest of this week. They need to be actually by the end of Business Day tomorrow in order to get included into the plan. And unless you have questions, I think that's all of my comments.
Councilmember Levinson.
Just a quick comment, Kathy, and I know we've gone over this. I just wanted an update on the timeline for spending the rest of the CDVG budget for 2011 that was allocated to economic development projects, because we didn't allocate a lot money for this coming year due to not having completed the rest of the expenditure. So how soon will we take that 11% up to 100%?
We have been working with Colorado Enterprise Fund, which is the group that we contracted with to help administer and spend those funds. We have spent about $45,000 to date out of the potential just under $400,000. So we're at about 10%, 11% as it shows on the chart. We have gotten quite a few loan inquiries in the past couple of, actually, the last month or so. I'm anticipating probably another five to six loans going out fairly quickly, but interest has increased. We're also doing some other things with the funds. We are going to use some of those funds to specifically assist businesses in the midtown neighborhood revitalization area with maybe some parking lot improvements or signage improvements to help improve the looks of the area of Main Street between 9th and 17th. So that will help spend some of those funds, that we hope to do that yet this summer. So I really think by the end of 2012, we'll have a good percentage of those funds spent down.
And then just because we're all interested in how CDVG is a generator of jobs, to be able to report back to our federal legislators, can we make sure we keep some statistics on how many jobs are created, new businesses, and what that return of CDVG money investment is for economic development? Sure. Thank you.
I'll open up a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item at this time? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Does anyone want to make a motion? Councilmember Levinson.
May I move that we accept the annual performance report as presented?
It's been moved in second. Passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Mayor and Council, next item is 8B, ordinance 2012-18. Public hearing and second reading of the bill for an ordinance extending the moratorium on accepting or processing land use applications, permit applications, or other applications seeking approval to conduct oil and gas extraction or related operations within the city limits. And Brian Schumacher has a short presentation prior to your public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Brian Schumacher with Economic Development. At your meeting on February 21st, we reviewed the draft oil and gas regulations at that time with council. And in addition to some direction the council provided on the draft regulations, they also provided a direction to extend the moratorium an additional 60 days beyond the current 120-day moratorium. So on February 28th, council passed the first reading of the moratorium extension ordinance and scheduled the second reading for this evening. So I just want to provide you just with a brief update, in addition to some of the work that's been done with respect to the regulations and updates, and the other work that we discussed with council on February 21st, and activities that we've been working on as of late. Those are outlined in your communication, your information communication that's in your packet. I believe it starts on page 228. So just in summary, and I'll be brief. Obviously, the governor's issued an executive order the end of February to form a oil and gas task force to address areas of mutual concern for state and local jurisdictions. And Councilman Bagley has been, was appointed to the task force, and he's attended several meetings of the full task force as well as subcommittee meetings. Okay, you've attended all meetings. And so the task force has a short timeframe to conduct its business. I believe the end date is April 18th to provide a report back to the governor with respect to several different areas that they are exploring. One is local government designee process and how that might be expanded or improved to provide better communication between local jurisdictions and the COGCC. Another area that's being looked at is the ability for local governments to have inspection authority with respect to review of oil and gas applications and activities in their jurisdictions. And beyond that, I'm not sure, and certainly Councilmember Bagley can provide a little more background and information with respect to the meetings that he's attended, but I think those are the two main goals of the group. There may be some others that they may try to address, but initially, I think that's the extent of the areas that they're going to be looking at. Another area that staff has been exploring is the potential for a memorandum of understanding or intergovernmental agreements, possibly partnering with other municipal and county jurisdictions along the front range to develop more of a regional approach to address areas of mutual interest between local jurisdictions and the COGCC. The County of Gunnison has been able to enter into an MOU and IGA with the COGC regarding local inspections, and that's also ties back in with the governor's oil and gas task force. The COGCC also initiated in February a initial stakeholders' meetings regarding setbacks to, primarily to structures. And there was, as I mentioned, there's the initial meeting in February. It was initially thought that there'd be another meeting in March. The next meeting is scheduled for April 19th. I just got that information yesterday. And so there's going to be looking at a variety of different issues with respect to setbacks of oil and gas facilities. And the purpose and intent of that process is to hopefully develop a framework for recommendations regarding whether the state rules on setbacks should be revised. And after the April, next meeting on April 19th, it's anticipated that the stakeholder meetings will be held every other week. At least that's the information that I've heard from the COGCC staff. Another area that we've been working on and exploring is outside activity areas, and those are areas that are designated by the COGCC that are defined gathering areas that meet certain criteria with respect to a number of persons there per, over a certain timeframe. And so if an area is designated as an outside activity area, then there are specific setback requirements from the boundaries of an outside activity area. To date, the only one that's been designated is the Sandstone Ranch softball, baseball fields. And staff did meet with Tom Kerr, who's the acting director of the COGCC, and some staff at the Department of Natural Resources earlier this month to talk about that process for looking at other areas in the community to make application for designation of an outside activity areas. And we are compiling information and data to put together an application for submission to the state with respect to those areas. And then a couple of other areas that we're working on in addition are, one we've been working on for a little while is developing a standard surface use agreement that would be used in place for oil and gas drilling and production operations on city-owned properties as well as potentially other areas in the community. And that might tie in with an overall operators' agreement for best management practices that might apply not only on city properties but citywide on a variety of different areas. What we try to do is develop some standard agreements and meet with existing and potential operators, oil and gas operators in the area, to hopefully reach agreement regarding best management practices regarding oil and gas operations in the community. And we would anticipate that those would be used in conjunction with and complement the oil and gas regulations that we are considering. In that information communication, there's also some information and updates with respect to well contamination on the Ryder 1, the stamp in the Seraphini wells, in terms of some previous analysis that was done and recent analysis and monitoring activities on those wells. And so I won't go into detail on that, but that's some background information that we're continuing to monitor. And I know that the top operating with respect to the Ryder well recently met with the school district officials to discuss some of their concerns with respect to the Trail Ridge Middle School nearby the Ryder property. And so in that packet of information, there's a letter from the school district to top operating regarding outlining some of their interests and concerns with respect to ongoing monitoring at that well site. In that, in that area in vain, the city has been talking with Terricon Consultants, an environmental consulting firm, about the, about conducting annual inspections on the 15 existing well sites located on city property. And as part of that, we would ask Terricon, they do site visits, and there's a, there's a listing of different activities and investigations that we undertake as part of that, that analysis. And then also, we've been talking with them about developing a groundwater monitoring program with respect to the existing well in the community as well. There's also some information in the communication regarding abandoned wells and well locations. Based upon our analysis, there's currently 13 plugged and abandoned wells within the city limits. There's three dry and abandoned wells. And then there's also 19 abandoned locations. And the abandoned locations are locations that were initially applied for permits but were never drilled. And so we're continuing to research that, that information regarding those, those well sites, and we intend to come back to council with some additional information at an upcoming meeting. We've also talked with Terricon consultants about preparing a proposal whereby they would review abandoned well sites, reports, and field locate the abandoned wells to get the exact location, because on the COGCC website, they're generalized in terms of the location, but we'd want to have those field verified. And then also potentially establish a monitoring system near the abandoned wells. And then finally, as was mentioned previously, we've been contacted by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment about a upcoming community presentation that they'd like to present with the COGCC staff. And I believe the date has been set for May 7th. And so I think that they were talking about starting the meeting, and we can confirm this, about 5:30 and going until around 8 o'clock. But the Department of Public Health and Environment and the COGCC staff would present some information regarding regulations on oil and gas development, and then also be available to respond to questions from the public regarding their roles with regard to oil and gas development. So under the current schedule, assuming council passes the moratorium extension this evening on second reading, which would extend the moratorium to mid-June, we would anticipate coming back to council in mid-April, I believe April 17th, in a second session meeting to talk about the next, next iteration of the draft regulations. And then based upon council's direction at that meeting, then we would plan to introduce an ordinance at the first regular meeting in May, May 8th, and then have a host of public hearing on May 22nd. So that concludes my remarks. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks. I guess just, I want to make two comments. One goes to the overlap of my member of the Longmont community and my role in the oil and gas task force. Where this battle will be played is in the arena called local government designee. It seems that the industry and also the environmentalists, they've decided that that is the tool that everybody feels comfortable with, having this knife fight in the closet. And so I guess I'm only one of seven, but we are going to need a local government designee, and I know that's you, Brian, or Mr. Schumacher. You need to become an oil and gas ninja.
Awesome.
And, I mean, literally, because that, on the first day, the oil and gas task force, for whatever happened, they decided that the local government designee process, we needed to be educated as a community on what that process is. And over the first three weeks, that has gone from let's educate the communities to let's totally redefine what the local government designee is. And so they didn't want to address substantive things like setbacks, wildlife, noise abatement, et cetera. They decided to address the local government designee. And so that is now the playing field, and the can of worms has opened, and many of the concerns that citizens and council will have will rest on the shoulders of you. So no pressure.
And our staff.
And your staff, but specifically you. So good luck with that. And then, and the other thing is, I don't know how many, I'm going to ask how many public invited to be heard comments we're going to have, and I welcome them, but I just kind of want to throw out what I'm thinking right now, and that is why I'm opposed to the six-month moratorium. And that is, or the additional six months. It's because we could wait, nobody at the state level, this isn't going to be changing. It's not. So waiting six months is just delaying the inevitable. There is a big scary person in our house, and we're locked in the bedroom, and we got to leave sooner or later. They're not scared about a moratorium because they know that they can beat us on that. What they're scared about is regulations that have been legally and lawfully thought out that are going to challenge the status quo. And so I voted for the moratorium so we can have time to come up with regulations that aren't going to be torn down immediately in court, but at the same time, will protect our community. And so having read the regulations, we're well on our way. It's time to leave the bedroom. It's time to leave the bedroom and confront the intruder, and we'll see what happens. So anyway, I still welcome the public invited to be heard. That's kind of my thoughts on the whole thing.
Thank you, Brian. Sounds like you might need a raise if you're going to become the ninja. It's true. All right. I will open this up to open a public hearing on this ordinance, and we'll start with Susan Followed by Shelley Basman.
My name is Susan Price, and I live at 3349 Rushmore. Mayor Coombs and the city council members, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? I'm speaking of fracking, I would like to, I don't, I mean, have we decided that we're not going for the six-month moratorium?
Go ahead, Brian.
Oh, no, not at all. I just wanted to, I just wanted to, I need my blankie at 11 o'clock, so that's the only reason why I mentioned it. But, no, but in general, I just, it was, the comment was made, the, don't, don't, start a time over, yeah. No, no decision has been made. Mr. Schumacher just mentioned that I might have some information to share, and I thought it was pertinent, but, no, go ahead, please.
Okay, well, I am definitely in favor of pushing this back to October, please. My community is 350 homes with adults, teens, and many children. We used to have a cornfield to our west, and now we have eight working wells, and it has been a nightmare. They're probably not even a football field away from my community. I haven't actually measured it, but I intended. It's been there a long time. The equipment was actually installed months and months ago gradually with excruciating noise, trucks, dust, the whole nine yards, and much the aggravation of the community. But nobody really knew exactly what was going on, and needless to say, we were very naive. So then one night at 9:00 PM, our postman, who had already thrown the mail for the day, had to come back to deliver notifications that the drilling would begin the very next morning, and it's been going on ever since. About five weeks ago, there was a huge explosion during late morning. Our community got robo calls to evacuate immediately that we were in grave danger. A messenger from the office of my community came to each house and said, yes, if the wind shifts, there has been a gas leak over there, if the wind shifts, we're going to be in grave danger, so be ready. And then the robo calls would come and tell us to get out immediately. It was just a mess. I mean, the whole thing has just been a big noisy mess. And my question is, if there, if this is so safe, then why is the county calling us and saying to evacuate immediately? If there's no danger in this, why am I getting these calls? I walked over to the site about two weeks ago, and I asked a worker there how long the wells would be there, and he said forever, and just turned around and walked away from me. So I would like to say, please extend the moratorium to October 2012. Minerals underneath us are 100 million years old, and it is imprudent, it is prudent and conservative to let them remain undisturbed at least until October. Oil and gas extraction is a heavy industrial activity that will impact Longmont for many decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Shelley Basman? Followed by Marilyn Hughes.
Does this belong to someone?
Stays there.
Oh, oh, it's just there. It lives there. Okay, thank you. I'm Shelley Basman, I live at 3414 Lakeview Circle. Congratulations, and I'm glad that we're entering the, what would you call it, the victory lap or the final phase? But I have some, and I have some thoughts for some more jobs to be done. And in particular, I would like to see the city have a division of oil and gas instead of putting it all on one person's shoulder. And I've also been impressed with the website for Flower Mountain, Texas. They have an oil and gas page on which they list the permits that have been applied for, the leaks that have happened in town, the mostly the pipelines, but the accidents and the leaks, the, that's just comprehensive and transparent and available to everyone. And anyone who has tried to glean information or get information from the COGCC knows that that website is not set up to be transparent. And I would like Longmont to, I'd like Longmont citizens to be able to know and, and be involved in this adventure that we're being forced on. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Oh, and so taking the time to do that would be a cool idea, and October's a great month to aim for.
Thank you, Shelley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm speaking tonight about a very new study that has just come out from the researchers at the Colorado School of Public Health. Garfield County asked the Colorado School of Public Health to assess potential health impacts of fracked wells on the community of battlement Mesa. The report, which looked at those living about a half a mile from the wells, comes in response to the rapid expansion of natural gas development in rural Garfield County in western Colorado, which sounds familiar to me. The short version is that the study, based on three years of air monitoring, found a number of potentially toxic petroleum hydrocarbons in the air near the wells, including benzene, ethylbenzene, toallane, and xylene. Benzene has been identified by the EPA as a known carcinogen. The study also stated that the health impacts are greatest for residents living closer to wells. Could this possibly mean that 350 feet or even 1,000 feet offset is not adequate to maintain a community's health? Xylene also detected has neurological and/or respiratory risks. The upshot is that people were exposed to air pollution that was five times greater than the federal standard. The Denver Post in a recent editorial states that there is a quote, "growing body of evidence that suggests significant air pollution adjacent to oil and gas wells where hydraulic fracturing is used merits closer attention, both from officials who regulate operations and the industry itself," end quote. The Post editorial goes on to say that, quote, "Unlike hypothetical or incidental examples of fracturing affecting groundwater, the findings coming in regarding the practice's impact on air quality indicate that it is a potentially serious issue," end quote. This is from a newspaper who has, quote, "maintained previously that drilling should be encouraged and face minimal regulatory roadblocks." I would like to congratulate the city council for passing a moratorium that was long enough to allow this information to come to light. And this is exactly why we need to extend the moratorium longer. Our state regulators, who will not allow us to require big enough setbacks to maintain public health, must be pressured, no waiting, they must be pressured to make changes in the laws. More studies may come to light. The more time we have to work with other communities and the COGCC, the better. This is your responsibility to extend the moratorium in an effort to protect the Longmont community. We are counting on you. The Niobrere shale is not going anywhere. It's going to be there when regulations and drilling practices are closer to the level of community safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I have the Denver Post article, oh, sorry.
Give your name and address.
1126 Fourth Avenue. I have a Denver Post article editorial and a article from the Colorado.
Just hand them to. The next person is Douglas Jones. Followed by Teresa Foster.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Douglas Jones, 243 Sherman Street. And I was going to talk a little bit about what I felt that we should extend this moratorium to October 12th, and then I heard Mr. Bagley's references about we should just jump out of the bedroom and confront our killer that's in the, that's in the house. And it seems to me that what we ought to do is create a plan before we actually jump out and, and get the killer. Do we have a knife in the drawer? Do we have anything to actually attack him with? Because, yeah, and we, when we have our ninja guy over here, but he needs to be trained yet, and he needs to, he needs to know what his differences are. And it seems to me like if we can get out there in front of this thing and assess, you know, why don't we have an oil and gas master plan that tells us, you know, these are the kinds of things that we take care of when 119, when a oil leak happens on 119 and all these businesses close and something, you know, some health hazards happen like that, how much is that a cost to the city? And do we pay for that? Or does the city of Longmont pay for that? Or does the oil and gas pay for that? Where do we find these balances? The only way we can do that is to extend the moratorium, make time to have those plans come to fruition so that we can address these things in a clear state of mind instead of just jumping out of that bedroom and screaming our heads off like, you know, we're just, we're just going to take care of it. So that's my opinion on that. Please extend the moratorium. I think it's pertinent that we do that.
Thank you, Douglas. Teresa Foster, followed by Michael Belmont, followed by Elise Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, City Council. Teresa Foster, 712 Thornwood Way. One thing that has become clear to me over the past couple of months is the city's lack of discussion about the risks of oil and gas drilling. The conversations have focused on red, yellow, and green lights being preempted by the state and lawsuits. What is missing is the concern about our health, our safety, and our well-being. In the staff report for today's meeting, I didn't see one item that directly addresses the health risks caused by exposure to the chemicals in the oil and gas drilling process. Boulder County is asking these questions. Why not City, Longmont City Council? I'd like to know why you haven't directed staff to research the threats to our health, our safety, and our welfare that will seriously affect our quality of life, and that means all of council too. I asked and staff been directed to work with the public health department at Boulder County to assess these serious risks. The city has only scratched the surface of all the potential risks that will affect us, your constituents. Because of that, I ask you to extend the moratorium to October 2012 to give sufficient time to explore the risk to you and your families and the people you represent. I want to tell you about my recent trip down Highway 40 in eastern Utah. As I drove through the cities such as Verno and Roosevelt, I saw open pits that were accepting produced water, water so toxic it can literally kill you. I could smell and taste the volatile organic compounds being sprayed into the air right next to the highway. My eyes were burning, and I could feel my airway constrict. Halliburton trucks toting toxic fracking chemicals were on the roads right next to me. I thought, what if there was an accident with one of these trucks? What if it happened in our city? The air quality in Euenta Basin is so heavily polluted that it's worse than Los Angeles, just like our neighboring city Erie. That area and Weld County are good examples of what we could see here if you don't include all the health risks in your decision-making. Please direct your conversations to the human level. Consider the effects to your children, to your family, and the elderly. Once again, I ask you to please extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Michael Belmont, followed by Elise Jones.
Michael Belmont, I live at 841 Tenacity Drive in Longmont. Excuse me. Okay. Now, sit. Camera these. It was precisely, or close to one-third of my allotted time here. And I illustrate this because one-third of my time felt like a long time in the context of this presentation. But really, in the scheme of things, not so much time. Similarly, we here appeal to you to extend this moratorium by only a little more than a third of what you are already contemplating. And by the way, that's four months, not six, Brian. Four months more. So that may feel like a lot today, but in the scheme of things, I think not. It will be quite short, especially considering what is at stake. You're hearing from a lot of those matters from these well-informed, concerned citizens here. But I want, I do want to take a moment to thank you, council, and to acknowledge you for advocating as best you can within the framework of the law and the regs in matters such as increased setbacks, no open pits, designated protected outside activity areas exempt from drilling, and groundwater monitoring, which, by the way, I think is perhaps one of the more pertinent, particularly in light of the three wells, which, of course, you know are in your, mentioned in your packet for today, that have been shown to be, have groundwater contamination, one being a mere 350 feet from Trail Ridge School. That was, by the way, 130 times the level of acceptable benzene at one point in time. Two others on city property that since December of 2010 have shown to have groundwater contamination and are yet unremediated. So we all know that the, beneath our feet, this gas has in fact been here for millenniums and will be here for quite a time to come, so October 12th is not a lot more time to contemplate.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for considering extending this well, October 12th.
Elise Jones? Followed by Anita Berkey Bragg.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs and council members. My name is Elise Jones, and I reside at 716 Marine Street in Boulder. In my day job, I'm the executive director of Colorado Environmental Coalition, which is a statewide conservation group, but I'm actually here tonight in my capacity as a candidate for Boulder County Commissioner from District 1. And while I don't live in Longmont, I am here tonight as a commissioner candidate because I care about all areas in the county and all residents in the county. And so I keep showing up, some of you might say like a bad penny, before you in Erie and the Boulder County Commission.
Excuse me. Councilmember Whit?
I'm sorry, but in general, we, if we have political candidates come, and it's going to take up a lot of time. If, if you're just here to do a campaign spot, we're going to open a can of worms, and everybody's going to want to come and, and do their free three minutes on air. I, I think it's a bad idea, but Mayor, your decision?
I think I'm going to allow it this one time because she does have a background in gasoline. Councilmember Santos?
Mayor, in the past, under Mayor Lang and Mayor Baum, when candidates came up and were specifically saying that they're running, running for office, they were not allowed to speak. It is a precedent that we have, and I would object. I mean, if you, if you want to talk, and Valerie, you might want to stop her time, so if she'd like to talk about, you know, extending the moratorium, oil and gas, that's great. But in your aspect, as, if you're coming in as a candidate, I would ask you to not. So I would try to differentiate yourself. If you're going to say that I'm, I'm going to be running for House District whatever or County Commissioner whatever, that's not really appropriate. So I would object.
I'll take that objection, so I guess I'll, I basically agree. Instead, I just want to continue and talk about the gasoline oil fracking and not the fact that you're a candidate, that's great.
My apologies. That was my intention. I will put back my cap. I'm the executive director of Colorado Environmental Coalition. I've worked on oil and gas issues for
spend more time on it. As fracking and drilling happens closer and closer to people's homes, their schools, their parks, their reservoirs, it's understandable that people are increasingly concerned. And I think it was noted, and I think it's worth emphasizing again, that recently released air emission studies are showing that the air emissions associated with oil and gas are much more extensive than we previously realized. This is new information being brought to light in the last month that is helpful to communities like Longmont, Erie, and others. And I'm thinking of both the NOAA study that found that propane levels in Erie were 10 times that of Los Angeles, and then the Biddleman Mesa study that was recently done by the University of Colorado Denver Public School of Health that found that people that live within a half mile of oil and gas activity experience a level of volatile organic chemicals that's five times the standard for what is deemed okay to public health. It would appear that the longer that we wait and the more time we take, the more information we learn, and the more time we'll have to come up with appropriate solutions. So, I believe it's critical that we address these public health impacts as best we can, and I would encourage you to take the time necessary to get it right. I think the Longmont residents deserve those types of protections. Thanks again.
Thank you, Elise. Anita Burkey-Bragg.
I'm Anita Burkey-Bragg, I live at 2549 Elmhurst Place. I'm not sure how I got on the list to speak about fracking, I know nothing about fracking. I had a statement from a business pilot at the airport to read. I won't take up your time, I'll just give it to the city clerk.
Thank you. Nicole Jones, followed by Jean Disler.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Jones of 905 Little Leaf Court. And the things I'm going, was going to speak about, I kind of have, you've heard already. I had two children, and I love raising them here. We love their school, we love our neighborhood, and I'm, I work very hard to keep them safe and healthy. I have a non-toxic, toxic home, we are active and healthy family. But, when I hear about studies done at neutral places like the University of Colorado Denver about if you're living within a half mile of a well, and I hear that this can cause breathing problems, cancer, and those are just a couple of things that I don't wanna deal with with my kids. I don't wanna live a half mile from a well. And where I live now, I would be a half mile from the well. And we go to the park, because healthy dose of sunshine and some fresh air, that's good for us, right? But if, we have parks, most of the parks in our city will be a half mile from a well. Our favorite parks, Left Hand Creek Park, Sandstone Ranch, Flanders Park, Willow Farm Park. How can I take my kids to these parks if I know they're breathing in this horrible things in the air? I just, I can't. So, I'm, I feel like if this happens here, there won't be any place that they're safe, and I won't stay. I won't raise my kids in a toxic environment. I know I might sound a little bit dramatic, but I'm that dedicated to this, and I know other mothers who feel the same way. And I think that Longmont brings a lot of families. You get a little more house, you get a little bigger yard than like Boulder, whatever. And we wanna stay here, because it's a good place to raise our kids. So, I would like, I would like the moratorium extended, just so you can look at all of the health effects like Boulder County is doing, doing a more comprehensive look at the impacts of drilling. So I ask you, please, to take just a little bit more time, like Mike was a bit, just a little bit more time to extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Jean Disler.
Hi, Jean Disler, 1541 Tucker Drive. Several weeks ago, after the gas leak from the wellsite on 119, my husband and I began asking questions about the city of Longmont's emergency preparedness in the event of a leak or an explosion at a wellsite. We contacted the fire department and were shocked to learn that there wasn't one, a plan. After hours and hours of research online, we found out a few things. By their own admission, municipal emergency response across the nation is often ill-equipped and ill-informed to make appropriate decisions in regard to oil and gas accidents. This lack of preparedness puts their lives and the lives of the citizens near drill sites in danger. Around sites that experience leaks or fires, I found evacuation radiuses ranging from a quarter mile to a mile. I found one case where hydrogen sulfide in concentrations that made people sick was found 30 miles from the source of a quarter of an inch pipe leak. For anyone who hasn't done a Google search on hydrogen sulfide in wells, they're referred to Assarowells, you don't want one of these anywhere near a home or a school, but it's certainly a possibility. I did find a safety planning brochure, and I'm going to leave you copies of it, from Tarrant County, Texas, and I'll read you some of the content of what they're advising their residents. If you expect, suspect a leaked, leak, do leave the area immediately on foot. Refrain from any activities that could cause heat or sparks. Leave the area before attempting to use, utilize cellular telephones. Don't let a match start an engine or switch electrical equipment, including lights, on or off. Don't make contact with any escaping materials, some products may be toxic or corrosive. It seems that evacuation for a leak or explosion needs to occur on foot. I wonder if the employees at Hayek, across from the leak on 119, left on foot. At any of our current and future wellsites, an accident could occur within close proximity, like at the elementary and middle schools, children and adults could experience dizziness, disorientation, passing out, and vomiting. Certainly, the city should be prepared for this sort of scenario, but also, the city needs to make sure the citizens and schools are also educated and prepared. Another city in Texas, Arlington, Texas, has spent some time drafting and developing a natural gas well preparedness and response plan at the direction of its fire chief. Perhaps learning from their example would be prudent. I'm asking that the city be prepared for the safety of our emergency response teams, for the safety of the students, and for the safety of the citizens. I'm asking that the city educate the public on safety planning procedures. I am hopeful that the city can take the proper time and care to do so before we are in further line of danger, rather than after. I also noticed in the city's packet that the St. Green Valley School System is working with top operating, asking that they not drill or frac during the school year. I would note that they should also ask that the completion of a well not occur during the school year, as the danger of having high levels of VOCs in the air is most extreme at that time. Drilling and fracking all summer long, only to complete a well right after school starts, thereby exposing children to VOCs would be a shame.
Thank you.
So, ask you to extend the moratorium.
Thank you very much. Jill Andreos, or Zeezy? Go ahead. I butchered it.
Mr. Mayor and honorable City Councilpeople, I am standing here today as a mother.
First state your address.
2691 Beach Circle.
Thank you.
I am standing here today as a mother, a nurse, and a citizen of Longmont. I would like to ask you to extend the moratorium until October of 2012. As witnessed in various places around the country, such as Pennsylvania, Ohio, New York, Wyoming, Colorado, fracking is an activity that does not have health benefits for the humans and animals living in close proximity, or even within a half mile radius. There have been numerous studies and papers published regarding the dangers of the VOCs released by these wells, not to mention water in nearby lakes, streams, and water tables. My concerns are regarding the effects of these chemicals on us and our children. Are we to be unwilling and unknowing participants in the great fracking experiment of the year early 2000s? I am saying right here and now, no. I do not wish for my family or me to be part of this experiment. Just ask the residents of Erie, Colorado, how they feel this experiment is going with regard to their air quality being worse than Pasadena or Houston, Texas. Or perhaps the residents of Pavilion, Wyoming, who can no longer drink their water. What does this mean for these communities in the long term? I am having a hard time understanding why the right to clean air and water is something we even need to defend, but I guess we must. It is an issue of public health and environmental contamination. We need more studies and more time for our community to establish safer guidelines for an industry that is running amok and out of control with seemingly little to no oversight to its effects on the living systems it is impacting. I would like to ask you to reflect on who benefits. Is it the city council? Is it the people of Longmont? Is it our children? Is it our rivers, lakes, streams, aquifers, and wildlife? Or is it the oil and gas industry, whose CEOs and management team most likely do not live here? This is a time when we must speak up against activities that have already shown that they pollute and contaminate the living systems around them. We must change our values, as many indigenous leaders around this country have already told us, to think of the seventh generation. Our children and our children's children will thank us. Please consider what is at stake. Extend the moratorium to October of 2012. The minerals underneath us are 100 million years old, and concert, and it is prudent and conservative, conservative to let them remain undisturbed at least until October of 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. David Pelster, followed by Chris Porzuchek.
Mayor Coombs, council members. My name is David Pelster, I live at 1574 Goss Hawk Drive. I read the information packet, and I appreciate your, your comments, Councilmember Bagley. But, one thing that I noticed, we got a lot going on, and I was wondering, why can't we make the moratorium contingent on expiring on a lot of these things resolving? The task force, not just the task force itself resolving, but all the processes implemented, and all the training that's, that potentially we might have to do for our, for our oil and gas staff, or our LGD. Why not let the stakeholders setback review, resolve, before we let our moratorium expire? Why not, there's a lot of information and contamination for three particular wells in the report. Why not make the operators of those wells clean up their wells, can clean up all the contamination before we accept any applications for them, new applications? The other thing that I noted in the information packet was that we didn't have any of our schools targeted for trying to identify and label as outside activity areas. I thought that was interesting. I don't see why they're any different, based on the number of people that are there long periods of time throughout the day. I look at Trail Ridge Middle School, since I live right next to it, there's the football field, there's the soccer field, there's always stuff going on. Fall River Elementary has their summer camps, they're outside all summer long, and of course, they're in school all, all school year, right next to it. So, that's it. I am also in favor of extending the moratorium as long as possible, and I, I really think it would make a lot of sense to make a contingent on, on those items like I mentioned. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Chris Porzuchek.
Well done. Thank you, Mayor Coombs, City Council. Chris Porzuchek, 12624 Weld County Road 1. I'm here to speak in favor of extending the moratorium till October, give you a few reasons why. We, also, thank you, city staff, for doing all the work that you've done. I think it's been very comprehensive, and I know without the citizens bringing this forward, you know, we wouldn't be pushing for the envelope as far as we have. So I do appreciate that. I realize it's harder for some than others to push as far as we already have. So, with the extension of the moratorium, one of the main reasons is, we live in this oil field, gas field, we're on top of it, they're coming. What is the hurry? They have a right, they're gonna drill here. If we can delay it, let's delay it. What is the hurry? NOAA has come out with a study in the last month. UCD has come out with a study in the last month. There are other things in the works that are going to come out over the next few months. Just because they have a right to drill, does not give them the right to pollute our air, and that's what they're doing. And we are in the process of proving that they are contaminating our air. And we have showed that they've contaminated our water. Why we would let them even in our city when we still have contamination in our city from them is beyond me. I don't think we should. They need to clean up the mess before we allow them back in. This study shows about the half mile, you've heard several people say, so that's why I'm selling my house, we all know that. But that's why, because I already knew this. It's putting off VOCs. They're putting it within 1,000 feet of my house, as close as 350 feet of my house. Then, my kid's gonna go to school 350 feet from another one. Why would I wanna put, put my kid through that? I'm, I'm not going to. It's sad. It makes me really sad. But the setbacks are just not efficient enough for me to say that it's okay to continue. And that's why we need a moratorium. We need to fight the whole setback issue. More than anything else, we need to get these farther than 350 feet away from our houses, because they are, unless, unless they clean up their emissions, but it doesn't seem like that's gonna happen in the next four months, right? They're not cleaning up their emissions, so let's please delay this so I can get out of my house. Please, I'm, I'm being serious when I'm pleading here. I do not want to be living there. I'm going to have to ask them to move me out while they're drilling there, based on the information that I'm getting from these studies. Would you wanna have to live somewhere else while they drill? I don't think so. So we do need to keep pressuring on the COGCC, the task force. Spend the billions of dollars. Spend it. I hear about billions of revenue. Let's spend it, so we know what we're doing to our own backyards. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Amy Sheer, followed by Tom Seaman.
Good evening, my name is Amy Sheer, I live at 2405 Flagstaff Drive, and I am here to try to encourage you to please extend the moratorium on the natural gas drilling. I have several friends that live in Firestone and Erie. I have friends that have no prior history of asthma, respiratory illnesses, that now are sick with asthma. There is an unusual, highly, unusually high rate of cancer in those areas. I have friends that live in those areas that have basically chronic sinus issues that never go away, it feels like they have a chronic sinus infection. If we invite, or if we allow more natural gas drilling within our city limits, this is really what we have to look forward to. And I'm with the gentleman that just spoke. I live in the Pleasant Valley neighborhood, and the neighborhood next to us is Prairie, Prairie Village, and several of us are prepared to put our homes up for sale if we cannot at least limit natural gas drilling within the city limits. I drive to, I work for Oracle Corporation, and I drive to 87 every day, and I see lots of open farmland that, granted, I don't want this in anybody's backyard, but why in the world are we putting it next to a school? It makes absolutely no sense. Anyway, I just encourage you to extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Tom Seaman, followed by Dwayne Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tom Seaman, 12566 County Road 1. While I'm up here, Gordon, I'm sorry I missed your party, so I wanna publicly thank you for all your service and celebrate with everyone else what you've done for the city. Want to imagine a scenario, probably goes on all over around the world, there's a young lady being courted by a young man. And the more she's being courted, the more she realizes this young man has a lot of issues that cause her concern. He has a very serious alcohol problem, he's had several DUIs, he's had business dealings where he's cheated people and he hasn't made remuneration. As a father of that daughter, you would ask her to really lay some boundaries and say, do not consider this. Ask for more time, don't say yes yet. And as I've heard all the citizens tonight, I'm And as I've heard all the citizens tonight, I'm just chiming in saying, there is a time and a place to look for objective things, to have that daughter say, until you get help with the alcohol, until these people get paid back. And so I see the character start changing. It's not a person you want to be married to. I heard, I'm looking on the internet about this issue, in the 1970s, there was a premature marriage, where the young woman said yes to the young man in this respect. In Hobbs, New Mexico, a developer built a housing development on an abandoned oil field. In 2007, there were national studies being done on this neighborhood because the rate of lupus, which is a very serious and painful autoimmune disease, was 30 to 99% higher than anywhere else in the nation. And one of the chemicals was called pristane that comes out of the oil field, as well as benzene, and these other words we've heard tonight. Regarding this young man's character, Chris and I can both tell you, we have not been approached by anyone saying, if our ox tramples on your field, we will restore your field. And I'm considering moving too. So I would too ask you to extend this moratorium.
Thank you, Tom.
My name is Dwayne Lee. I live at 2676 Pearl Howard Road, Longmont. Why is it that you were asked to put the ninja between you and your decisions by the state? It is not Mr. Rademacher's responsibility to make the decisions. It's yours. If there is a child that comes down with some kind of dreaded cancer or disease of some sort, he is not the one who's responsible. You are. Don't put it off. Don't say, oh, I'm not responsible. I'm only one of. We're all responsible. And if you sit there and you don't do anything, and we have negative impacts, which it appears at this point that that's the case, you're responsible. You're responsible. To put off the moratorium for another four months, that's nothing. That is nothing. And if you don't vote for the moratorium to be extended for four more months, it is almost like an unprovoked capitulation. You have no risks. You have no downsides. What's your downside? What is the city's downside from putting this off for four more months? It's almost nothing. What are the kind of problems you could get into by moving too quickly? Many. Do a risk-reward analysis inside of your own soul, inside of your own hearts. I'm not the one who has to live with this responsibility. You do. Don't put it off on some word game, a ninja, for crying out loud. We're responsible. We need to protect ourselves. In a world of best practices, all of this would be done as far away from people and as far away from water supplies as is possible. And we would do that first. Only in the end, if we had an absolute imperative need, would we come to doing it close to people and close to our water supplies. Please think. Please be responsible.
Thank you, Dwayne. Is there any, is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak at this time?
K. Fissinger, 2199 Creekside Drive. I hadn't really planned on speaking tonight. I knew there'd be several people speaking and bringing up a lot of points. Usually when I come down here, I speak to policies, I speak to maybe legal issues. But tonight I want to address it a little bit from a personal point of view, but it's gonna be really hard following Dwayne's. One reason why you might extend it to October? Let the people of Longmont enjoy Union Reservoir, undisturbed this summer. It's a simple little thing, but we don't need to have the drilling start right in the middle of the summer season when people are trying to enjoy their time. And the other thing I'd like to bring up, one of the parcels in the red zone is to the north of Left Hand Creek. I live right by Left Hand Creek, Village Creekside. There's a parcel at Hoover and Pike that's in the red zone. It could be drilled. I'm a lung cancer survivor. I'm missing the upper left lobe of my lung. I have COPD. Do I want them drilling where I can see it, feel it, smell it? Do I want cancer again? I don't think so. You can give us four months. It's not a lot. Thank you.
Go ahead, Strider.
Thank you, Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I can appreciate Councilmember Bagley's attitude, and I think I understand it, which is basically, the steamroller is coming anyway. Why don't we just start taking up fist cups and try to lay out and protect whatever turf we can? But one of the games they've been playing lately is that, oh, we don't have any evidence of any spills or any damage, and therefore, let's just go ahead and drill now, drill everywhere. And the reports are coming in of the damage, Erie, you know, Wyoming Town, all over, and the spills here, which is just the beginning of the, you know, of the issue. We have, as citizens in this, in this country, common rights to protect our public health and the environment and the lands and the water. And it is in the Constitution. There have been Supreme Court decisions 160 years ago to verify that. But let's look at what's going on. The Obama administration, with their policy of all of the above, has already increased, increased drilling radically everywhere.
Thank you.
Including the Gulf of Mexico and the Anwalt Reserve, giving out permits. It's, wait, you're, you're, no, that's not, that's not appropriate. I had been talking less than a minute.
Oh, okay. She didn't restart it?
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Thank you. It did seem like a pretty short presentation. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. We are producing the maximum oil now that we have in the last eight years. But all the opponents of Obama openly lie and proclaim their intent to drill everywhere right now with zero concern for public health now, next year, or the next decade, as hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, droughts, and deserts increase, and the glaciers and ice caps melt. And look at what's going on right this minute. Scientists have indicated this is the strangest winter that has ever happened. Half of the continent has been experiencing record highs for an entire month. Chicago, first day of spring, had 87 degrees. International Falls, Minnesota, a week earlier, 77 degrees. What is that? 22 degrees higher than ever before in history. And it wasn't a one-day spike, which occasionally and rarely happens. No, 10 days in a row of record highs, a month in a row of record highs. And this is just the beginning. What about when the methane starts getting released? And you have 20 to 80 times higher the factor of disruption in the atmosphere is with CO2. We may have already passed the tipping point. If we don't do something, and the very same people are saying, drill more, are trying to prevent any research and development in alternative energies, which is the only thing that's gonna save us on this planet. Let us pull the pieces together. I understand Mr. Bagley's point about, about a brief extension. We gotta have the two months, but I think we oughta have the four months. Thank you much.
Thank you, Strider.
Sure. If it's on the subject. Thank you very much. I'm Joe Bassman, 3414 Lakeview Circle.
Oh, just a minute. Yeah, I'm sorry. We set the ground rules that you got to speak at the first call on this subject.
Yeah.
So you can speak then?
Yeah.
We already made it, speak at the end of the meeting then? Is that allowed?
Yep. That's allowed. Thank you. I forgot about that. My bad.
Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion at this time? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Brian Schumacher. I didn't know you and Dale were related. So I have a question. This might be more of a question for Eugene. It's my understanding that, in theory, if a city were to drag its feet and extend a moratorium, extend a moratorium, extend a moratorium, what stops a operator who has mineral rights to go to the COGCC and say, you know, I'm not getting any cooperation with the city issuing me a permit? Is that a possibility?
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. The COGCC and the state permitting process is a parallel but separate permitting process. So yes, they could go and get a state permit. They still do have to comply with local permitting processes. That was the town of Frederick. And so our current regulations, well, they would have moratorium here and wouldn't be able to get a local permit.
But if they weren't, for some reason, if they weren't, you know, we have a moratorium in place, and they say, you know, we're ready to go, could they be issued, could the COGCC issue a permit to allow them to drill?
Certainly, the state could issue them. They're not subject to our moratorium. It's a local.
Right. So the state, so the state could issue a permit to allow them to drill. Where would, if that were the case, where would we be with our rules and regs?
Well, we'd be looking to enforce our moratorium.
We would, but they've issued a permit from the state. So we would be in litigation?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And since they own the mineral rights, you know, a lot of this is about ownership of mineral rights, which unfortunately, we don't have. So my concern is that we go to litigation, we lose, we have no say about anything. No say on water monitoring, no say on noise, no say on dust, you name it. We had a meeting earlier, and I, we've had discussions about what the regulations may or may not be. I'm actually looking forward to seeing those come, come to pass, at least, you know, an open and public discussion like we normally have on every topic, whether it's oil and gas or the airport. My concern is that we go to litigation, we have no say. I'd rather have some, some rules and regulations in place than have nothing. So with that, I move ordinance 2012-18.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I would like to make a friendly amendment and request that we amend the ordinance to have a closing date of the moratorium to be October 12, 2012. So that would address changing line nine and 10 on page two, which says there shall be a 180-day moratorium. I would just put that as a date certain October 12, 2012. That's my motion.
I'm gonna second.
That's not a friendly amendment, we need to substitute. So let's, let's do a friendly. She, as a friendly amendment.
It could be an unfriendly amendment. It could be a hostile amendment. Okay. You want me to make a hostile amendment now?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. We'll make a substitution.
Turn it.
So I'd like to make a substitution on an item in the motion to have the end date being October 12, 2012.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Golly, I love this topic. That was sarcasm, by the way. The, we, we faced something like this before, and that was when we first put up the moratorium and I explained my theory on the frac U-line. And we were gonna go have the frac, we had an invitation to go out and view the fracking occur, which was quickly withdrawn as soon as we passed the moratorium. There's two issues here. One is micro and one is macro. The macro, please don't move Mr. Porzyczek and Mr. Seaman's, you know, I would miss you. But the macro or the, the micro picture right now is what do we need to do to save your farm and your house? So when I'm actually thinking about this issue, it's, I'm sorry, whose house? No, 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 no. But right, I know it's all your houses. What I'm saying is right now, or, or the Ryder well, right? The Ryder well. So right now, we have an opportunity here locally, without any regulation, to talk to the mineral rights owner, and we're cursed and blessed that it's only one, top operating. Anadarko and Cana, they're a little bit farther off, but it's top operating who we're dealing with. And it's possible, I feel, city staff has an opportunity to move that well pad, that consolidated well pad, to a location that's not going to be as intrusive. I recognize the health concerns, I recognize the worries, the air quality, all that stuff. But, but, so the micro question is, what do we need to do to move that well pad? We have a real opportunity, I believe, to move the well pad. So that's the micro version. Then the ma, the macro problem is one of, the reason why the ninja analogy, I feel, is, is appropriate, because I'm not an expert here. I, I'm gonna sit on council for a handful of years, and then I'm gone. But it's obvious in talking and in hearing municipalities who are pro-drill or anti-drill, whether they are successful in promulgating or stopping, it comes down to how knowledgeable are the staff on the oil and gas regs, the local government-designing process? If we were to, I mean, it would be very tempting to jump on the bandwagon, I mean, and just say, yeah, let's stop it. Let's put a moratorium in effect, let's have a rolling 30 days. But what's gonna happen is at some point, they are going to step up with a lawsuit. I personally, I have a firm here in town. I have had multiple representatives come to my office and basically explain, this is what's gonna happen. I'm not running from this fight. I'm just saying that there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. I personally feel, and I know that I'm in the minority, at least in the room, but I personally feel that the way to go about it is to deal locally with the operator through refer power, relationships, be nice, ask, don't force, get them away from the, the middle school, get them away from Porzyczek and Seaman's house, put it up north, put it down south, but not so close to homes. That's doable. And then on the macro level, it's very, I mean, it's a, it's not gonna be something that's gonna be over in October, January, next June, next October. This is going to be a process. I wish I could say different. And so, and so, in my mind, I don't have an hour and a half to give a presentation, at least, I feel we have a plan. I feel we have a plan. And that plan is, think micro and macro, and just start doing the things that we've been preparing for and that staff has been preparing for. And that's kind of where I stand still. I know it's difficult. Say that again? If I had to bet, I'm pretty sure they'll listen. And the thing is, if we pass the moratorium, let me put it this way, I do know after talking to our city attorney and in seeing Oil and Gas Task Force and kind of being enmeshed in all this, I do know that if they don't want to work with us and we send a message, we don't want to work with you, they can force us. And so right now, let's fix the micro, and if I'm wrong on top, I'll be the first one to come back, you lied to us. What's going on? Like, I mean, but right now, I think they're willing to work with us. Okay.
That's run it.
I just want to move up into Hugh. You know, my thoughts are, I kind of agree with some of the points that Brian's making. Where I really struggle is, you know, we have a situation where we have to follow the state regulations and these setbacks. And that conflicts with our ethical requirements to protect the health and welfare. They're a total conflict. And I just, I mean, it's keeping me awake at night. You know, I wish we could, you know, I would rather be able to push the setbacks because all along, to me, the air quality problem came right to the service. That scared me way more than the water pollution ever did. And I've got over 40 hours of research in this, so, I mean, I have not taken this lightly. And, you know, and the more we wait, the more scary it becomes. I mean, you know, that's why it's a tough decision. I kind of agree a little bit with Brian, but I also heard a lot of those great points on, you know, is it just a threat? Or are they really going to take us to court? Are we really going to break all of our relationships with top, however good or bad they are? I mean, it's a struggle. I mean, it's kind of like we've got a choice of, you know, getting hit with a baseball bat in the head or getting hit in the thigh. Councilmember Levinson.
I'd like to explain a couple of reasons that I think we should look at extending this to October. Number one, you know, nine months is the absolute, the edge that you can't fall off of. And that's what, you know, some other people have done, and it's been something that has not been litigated to the nth degree. The other point is that if we extend it to October, of course, if we get all of our ducks in a row, and we have our regulations done, and we have expertise in staff, I mean, I cannot expect that Mr. Schumacher, in the space of a few months, is going to become the ninja you expect him to be. You know, it took a couple of movies before, you know, that little boy, they even had to do a remake of the little boy learning how to become the ninja. So, you know, you can't just drop it into slots. And having the regulatory environment, I mean, you know better than almost anybody that if there's going to be another process with stakeholders and setbacks and some agreements, if we have our set of regulations, we end our moratorium in June, somebody comes in and those other regulations with setbacks are in flux, we basically are SOL. But if we extend the moratorium to October, we can have our regulations in place still by June. And if there's nothing else on the horizon in the near future for the setback issue or some of the other issues, then, fine, you know, I agree, we need to go ahead with something. We need to have something on the books. I think all of us agree on that. But with the environment constantly changing, and certainly, our highest obligation is to the welfare and safety and health of the people that live within the city of Longmont, and I swore an oath to that. So I take that very seriously. And, you know, we can't do any harm by saying October. We can end it earlier, but it gives us that little extra edge of flexibility in time. And time is something we're not going to get back. You know, again, the worst possible thing is that we overlook something, that as smart as we have ourselves up here and staff, if we overlook something, the moratorium lifts in June, and then there's this, oh, my gosh. We don't have any fallback position at all. We don't have a first test of, you know, what ifs on the regulations. It's just, you know, it lowers the boom, and then here we go, flat out, the race starts. And, you know, I just want to take a little bit of caution. The other part of it is that we need to have some numbers on what are we going to devote as far as city tax money in our next budget to provide all the backups that we need, water testing, coming up with a plan from TerraCon as to what they're going to charge us to do these monitorings. We've got to budget that stuff. How are we going to budget it unless we really know all those things? And then we have to get the public support for that budget, and that'll happen before October.
I guess I want to officially second your unfriendly amendment or motion. Such people. Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, Eugene, when we spoke earlier about coming up with these regulations, you were going to include the statement in there that would include by reference any new regulation that would be more stringent than what we already have if it's passed by anybody else. Is that still the case?
Mayor and councilmember Samori, you know, I think I have some legal concerns about having that incorporated by reference without having council adopted by ordinance. I'm not exactly sure what the scope of your thought is for additional regulations.
Well, there's been a lot of concern that's been brought up in front of us tonight, and one of the main ones is the air pollution. So if all of a sudden, or the distance from residential or schools. So if the COGCC all of a sudden says, okay, it's going to be 1,000 feet, why can't we just implement that automatically by reference into our ordinance?
If it would be a COGCC reg, most of our draft regulations are set up to reference those COGCC regs, so it would be.
Okay. So, but any other ordinance that would come from other communities that do not infringe on state law or state rule could also be done the same way? If they apply to us?
I'm not sure that they could be done the same way because the COGCC rules apply statewide, regardless of what a local does, whereas other local jurisdiction ordinances apply within their municipal boundaries or local boundaries. And so it's not an overlay that the COGCC regs are, it is a separate ordinance.
Okay. And I think we've demonstrated to the public that when we first started with the 120-day moratorium, and staff came back to us and said, well, it's enough, it's not enough time for us to complete what we need to do, we gave them the additional time that they need. And if that were to change, I believe we could extend it as well. So I don't see the immediate need to extend it right now, before we know where we're going to be on the regulations themselves. We had a meeting earlier, I think we've made a lot of progress, and I think we'll have very solid and defensible regulations. So I personally don't feel that we need to extend it to make sure that we have them because our staff has done a tremendous job in coming up with regulations that exceed the requirements, but yet would not be challenged or preempted for the most part. And we are going to be pushing the envelope. So I would not be for extending it right now, but if any new evidence came in within the next 60 days, we can always revisit it.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to say, you know, we all have invested a great deal of time in reading emails and researching the information that has been sent to us both by constituents and by staff members and, I hear a tone a lot of times that if I don't vote to extend the moratorium, I am not listening to my constituents, and that is simply not the case. What our job is, is to take all the information, both from our constituents and from other sources. We're supposed to evaluate it and then make a decision that is in the best interest of our community. We are not robots. Just by getting 200 emails a day does not change our minds, especially when they're the same thing over and over and over again. We do not read those, we just delete them because we have it memorized by now. So now, I really feel that we have some productive things going on. I do not feel that if we extend the moratorium in October, that would be in the best interest of Longmont. I feel that if we give the, we are, as Mr. Schumacher indicated, there is some definite willingness to work with us with, in the local designee process. You know what? Let's put them to the test. Let's do that. Let's do as much as we can, and let's work out those memorandums of understanding with top operating. Let's do that. So we're going to do as much as we can, and I am very optimistic that we will be able to come out in a much better position than we are right now. But let it be known that we intend to enact regulations that are going to, that are pushing the boundaries, and if that means that we are courting a lawsuit, for some things, we will court a lawsuit. And the health and welfare of our citizens is one of those things. So, and, but we're not going to be foolish about it either. We're being very careful in choosing the things that we feel we have a good chance of defending, and these are reasonable regulations. So please know that we hear what you are saying and we understand it, but we have to keep it in the context of everything that is going on. And for that reason, I cannot support the substitute motion, although I understand the spirit in which it is given, and I understand that, but I will not be supporting it.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I totally agree with what Katie just said, but I, what I wanted to say was, we, I know that you guys want to extend this and extend it and extend it. You think it's in the best interest of the public's health and the community's welfare, but the fact is that we can't, we don't need more time. We really don't need more time to do the best job that we can do legally. We will expend all our goodwill, should we extend again, we will have expended all our goodwill with top and the oil and gas community. They will not, they will run out of patience, and they will take no prisoners, and we will be in a worse position than we are now to negotiate. I will not support the substitute amendment either.
Well, I think before we vote, I just want to say one quick clarification. You know, again, the only thing that I am concerned about that we haven't strongly addressed yet in our regs is the air quality monitoring. You know, we're looking at things, but nothing's really spelled out, and that's really the only reason why I wanted more time. I mean, otherwise, I want to be done with this thing. I mean, I kind of agree with Brian. I want to come out of that closet and face my enemy and get this over with. But that one issue of not seeing a clear path of how can we protect someone from breathing those toxic fumes still bothers me to the core.
Councilmember Samori.
How can you protect someone from breathing the toxic fumes from the cars that drive by every day? Or the trucks that drive by every day? I mean, how far do you take it? And it's not, it's not that I don't care about it, but we can give staff direction to continue to pursue it and come up with the information that we need. And I don't know that that necessarily requires another four months. They can come back and tell us. We have 60 days additional right now. If within those 60 days, they find that it's not adequate, they can let us know.
Well, the solution to pollution is always dilution. Move something further away, factor of two, and the pollution level goes down by factor of four.
That's the distance from where they start the fracking to the residence. And that is something that has been clearly stated to us that we don't have any control over right now because COGCC dictates the distance. It's not us. We can put in our regulation, 10,000 feet. It's not going to happen.
It still is more of a law of ethics versus the law. That's the whole. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Something that worried me a great deal the first day of the Oil and Gas Task Force is that Attorney General Southers came in and made the statement quite clearly, now I'm not saying that he was right or wrong, but he said that local communities do not have the power to enforce. We have the power to inspect. And so at this moment, even if we were to, I mean, monitor the air, monitor the water quality, there are a lot of people on the other side saying, what do we do? Yeah, shut up and breathe it. And so, like you, Mayor, what do you do? I don't know.
Councilmember Santos. Thank you. You know, people have brought up setbacks, the setbacks. You know, we have been told by staff, our city attorney, you know, there is this preemption. Okay. You know, we cannot make, as Alex said, we cannot make these changes. The changes can be made at the state level. Those can be made at the state level. You know, it's trying to get, you know, unfortunately, there's been a lot of not real consensus building down in Denver regarding a great many topics. You know, it's on both sides. But until somebody can have a clear head and say, hey, I'm willing to sit down and work with you on a topic, we're not going to get anywhere. So again, there's certain things we can do, and we're trying to work within that framework. Maybe pushing the envelope on a couple of items. But if you want greater setbacks, more control over the toxic fumes, that has its place, and that is at our general assembly.
All right. I guess we got to vote. Are we ready to vote on Sarah's substitute? Okay. It fails, two to five, with Brian Bagley, Dave Santos, Councilmember Witt, Councilmember Finley, and Councilmember Samori, descending. All right. Shall we vote on the first amendment? Councilmember Bagley.
Just as I'm about ready to vote on this, I just want to point out that when I made the motion to extend it two months, it was an extension of the moratorium, and I feel like I'm voting against it. So just the irony here is killing me.
Okay, passes seven to zero. For the council, the next item is item 8C, ordinance 2012-19. Public hearing in second meeting of a bill for ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to amend the following leases of real property at the Vance Manhattan Municipal Airport. Handover parcel F2D to Jamie Shore, F2E to Brock Harris, doing business as BT Enterprises, H14F to Douglas M. James, H66 to Pat Kopresky, H65 to Romeo Charlie LLC, H69 to Bill Tenor, H17 to-
H17 to Bob Lenore, H59 to David W. Paul, SWP1 to National Ecological Observatory Network Incorporated, H13 to Jim Johnson, H24 to Steve Alderman, H50 to Hanger 50 LLC or Incorporated, H13 to Jim Johnson, H24 to Steve Alderman, H50 to Hanger 50 LLC, H18 to David Pyle, and SH7 and SH8 to LMO Condo Associates Incorporated. And Mayor, this is a rather lengthy routine action, and we do not plan to make a presentation unless council has questions.
All right. Are there any questions, council? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. We have one person signed up. I can't read the writing. Eli Chai? Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this? All right, apparently they're... Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. There's no additional, Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. I move ordinance 2012-19.
All right, let's vote.
Passes seven to zero. In council, we're ready for consent agenda. Item 9A is resolution 2012-17. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with Weld County for the annexation of Weld County Road 26. 9B is not a resolution. It's just a motion to approve the request to refer the airport road annexation into the annexation review process. 9C is resolution 2012-19. This resolution approves the Vance Brandon Municipal Airport Master Plan. 9D is resolution 2012-20. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with Platte River Power Authority for a water supply agreement. 9E is resolution 2012-91, or 21. This is an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County to amend the programs funded by the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. 9F is resolution 2012-22. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County to lease the fairgrounds for the July 4th fireworks. 9G is resolution 2012-23. This resolution approves a mutual aid agreement with the Lions Fire Protection District for firefighting and other emergency services. 9H is resolution 2012-24. This resolution approves removing certain territories within the city of Longmont from the Mountain View Fire Protection District. 9I is appointing members to the Affordable Housing Technical Review Group. And 9J is the one that was added to your consent agenda, and this is approval request to refer their fairgrounds marketplace to the annexation review process. And Mayor and council, I do not need to remove any for presentation purposes unless council wants them removed.
Are there any items that the council wants removed from the consent agenda? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to remove C.
Councilmember Bagley.
I don't want to move it. I just want, or remove something, I just have to disclose something. The, on J, item J, that we just added, the council, Scott Oliver, for the owner of the land, I, he rents office space from me. And so, and I like him. Doesn't change my vote, but I get rent from him. So just wanted to disclose it.
Councilmember Santos.
If there aren't any others, I move the consent agenda minus 9C.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. It passes seven to zero.
And Mayor and council, item 9C is removed for the airport master plan, and since we've not heard anything about that matter tonight, I'm sure we'll have an interesting discussion.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Tim, before we start, hate to do this, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Bagley, I would like to extend our meeting through the remainder of our agenda.
Second.
All right. It moved and seconded. Shall we vote? It passes five to two with Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Finley descending.
Thank you. Now that we've had our laugh and our extended of the meeting. Tim, I've heard a lot of people say that there hasn't, doesn't look like an adept enough looking at house values and property around the airport. Can you tell them if the master plan is supposed to look at that type of evaluation, or does it focus more on the airport itself?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Tim Bart, City's Airport Manager. Councilman Santos, that's an excellent question. I know that it's been brought up by members of the public. The master plan focuses on quite a lot of things, but if it's all right with the council, I'm going to let Travis come up here and answer this question, since he's worked extensively on this issue. He can probably explain it a little bit better than I can.
Mayor Coombs, members of the council, Travis Valine with JVIA. The answer to the question is, when we scoped this master plan, we followed the guidelines that the FAA has for all master plans, whether it be for Longmont, Denver International Airport, or Los Angeles. We did have a long discussion about what was eligible, but when we looked at what we could do for federal eligibility and funding, this item is not eligible, not only for Longmont, but for any airport. So we had a discussion on why that wasn't included as the scope of the master plan as we started this process about 18 months ago.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is, did the master plan look at noise abatement? You know, we've heard from many people that have come up to us, we can initiate any ordinance at any time, and we can control airplanes, we can control the airplanes. Is that an option for the city, or does the FAA have more jurisdiction, a final say on the issue?
Yeah, as far as what we did in the master plan, we did look at the average noise level that would be created with any development on the airport affecting from the airport. The challenge is, is we have to look at the averages, the noise as an average, not a single event. So we did look at the noise contours as part of the master plan. We identified where the noise contours are today, and they will be in the future. Majority of the noise contours will be contained on airport property. As far as actually controlling the airplanes, unfortunately, the city council, the airport sponsor, does not have the ability to control the airspace. That is left to the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, because it's part of the national airspace system.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification. I would move resolution 2012-19.
Second.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One of the other issues that has been repeatedly brought up, and I asked you that the last time you were here, is insurance. I know that the FAA probably doesn't require or demand that pilots have insurance, but I think what I heard you say the last time when you answered it, is that before they can take off, they have to show that they have proof of insurance. Am I correct, or am I off base?
Yes, no. The answer to that is, the FAA does not have the ability to force an individual to have insurance. There are a couple of states, you're going to pull up the slide, Tim. We're going to pull up the slide on some information on that. Specific states can require or have required insurance for aircraft operators. Alaska, California, Minnesota, Missouri, South Carolina, and Virginia have state statutes which require airplanes and aircraft owners. But as a renter, if I go to rent an airplane, there's insurance on the airplane, and then many times, if there's a lien on the airplane, there will be an insurance requirement. But today, the federal government does not and cannot require insurance for all aircraft owners.
Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I thank you for all the work you've done and everything you've done as far as the public meetings and the great illustrations and poster boards. I would, I just want to clarify a point. When we're looking at the revenue that comes into the airport, the airport is an enterprise fund. It doesn't go, anything that comes from revenue from fuel sales and other, the leases we just approved, that doesn't go to the general fund, does it?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, no, that's correct. All of that money goes to the airport. We are an enterprise fund. The money that we make on the airport goes back into the airport to operate the airport, and we are prohibited by federal law to actually take any of that money and put it over into the general fund.
And I guess a couple of the parts of the plan that I would like to see done first is, you know, just get the darn thing looking prettier. I mean, I think that anybody who's been out there has realized, I mean, you know, I was frankly, a little horrified, and I've said this publicly before, I just hope code enforcement never goes out and sees what your office looks like, Tim, because you wouldn't be having an office anymore. I think if we would actually apply our city code to where you sit in an office, we wouldn't, you know, have that. Well, you know, we don't want to bring the force of OSHA down on us, do we? However, I think really the first step in this is that we've identified some serious flaws in the infrastructure. And I think that the purpose of the master plan is to identify, kind of do that SWOT analysis. And I think that that's been accomplished. But by all means, the first thing that, I mean, that everybody talks to me about, there's certainly the issue of the extension of the runway, but over and over again, the users that I encountered, not just airport advisory board members, but others at those public meetings said, oh darn it, it's like an embarrassment to be out there. And I've been there, and it, you know, that needs to, the operation needs to look like the real thing first. And so, I would suggest that before we take any look at putting more pavement out there, that, you know, you can extend a runway, but if you have really schlocky facilities, you're not going to attract what you think you're going to attract if you know that, you know, your formula is longer runway, you know, higher number of certain kinds of visitors and certain kinds of needs. Because if you don't meet those needs, they're still not going to come to Longmont. Doesn't matter if the runway's longer, and you can sell more fuel. You know, if there's nothing to land for, and everything looks terrible, and, you know, we have to send them to your office to do something, I wouldn't do that. So, you know, my first goal in saying that I would accept this plan, and the work that's been done is, the number one thing is not the runway extension. That, to me, is the last thing. That's far out. But let's get every aspect of the airport, let's get indoor plumbing, let's get all those things that, like, look normal. And, well, you know, there's no outhouses, but it's not a great facility. And I think, well, it will be eventually, but I think that when we're collecting rent from hangar owners, that there's got to be some kind of expectation of, you know, some kind of service aspect out there. And I don't think that we have a real strength, that would be putting it really kindly, that we don't have a strength in that area. And, you know, there's a really good house on Pratt Street right now that the county is giving away, that might be able to be moved to the airport, that blue house. It's free. That might be a really good place for your operation. Might be a good place to put a commercial kitchen in, too, and let it have a little restaurant out at the airport, too. So I would agree on this plan, and again, work on the stuff that matters most right now is getting that facility looking better. The runway extension, in my opinion, will come if it comes. I don't think the federal government's going to have money to do a lot of that stuff in the future, anyway. So I think the runway extension at this point, while, you know, it's nice for us to have it in a plan for a lot of people's needs, I think it's kind of a pipe dream at this point.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I remember, but I'm just asking a question to hear it again. Upon, if it's not a pipe dream and we actually get it done, based on your studies, data, et cetera, how much will traffic increase at the airport?
As part of the master plan, we did look at a 20-year forecast. We're actually projecting operations to increase slightly, just a little over 2% per year. If you remember, when we started this planning process, the airport thought that they had about 100,000 operations. When we looked into it, we basically brought that real number down to about 61,000. So in 2010, we're about 60,000 operations, growing to about 96,000 operations by 2030. So very modest growth. So we're not expecting a lot of growth.
To me, that's an important number.
I guess, shall we, what, I'm moving this one forward? Passes seven to zero.
Mayor Nixon, final item on general business is the board and commission of appointments, and Valerie will help you conduct that selection.
Hey, Mayor Coombs and members of council, we have one opening on the water board, and we have two applicants for that. I did put ballots at your stations if you'd like to vote for one. And Tim asked me to remind you that if you do not want your airport master plan binders, please leave them with me at the end of the meeting, and we'll get those back to you.
Lights on, just go ahead.
All right. Councilmember Bagley voted for...
Okay, so we're not voting here, we're just going to...
I just have to, okay, I have something. Councilmember Bagley asked a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagley asked, off mic, that had anybody interviewed these two individuals. I will say that Tom Williams did come to the water, the water board, did interview, well, just basically introduced himself. So at least one person did come, at least come to the meeting. There you go.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Bagley voted for H. Gale Lucas. Levinson voted for Todd Williams. Witt voted for Todd Williams. Coombs voted for H. Gale Lucas. Samori voted for Todd Williams. Finley voted for Todd Williams. And Santos voted for Todd Williams. So Todd Williams received five votes. Thanks.
Great. Okay, it's our final call. Public invited to be heard. Sure. Yeah, turn on. Is that on?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Joe Basswin, 3414 Lakeview Circle. I won't keep you too long. I have six short notes that I made. I think I'll start with number four. As you all know, there is a report of groundwater contamination at the Stampwell that's 500 feet or less from Union Reservoir. I don't know if anyone has requested that the water in Union Reservoir be tested. I would think that that would be prudent. It would also establish a baseline for additional activity that's going to be going on out there. Let me use that number four as simply a metaphor for the rest of what I'm saying. I understand tonight that the public was making a clear message. I wouldn't be surprised if many of the emails that you received delivered the message that we are not done when we pass regulations. There is an element of testing it, there's an element of systems analysis, there's an element of implementation, there's an element of bringing one person up to speed to represent the city. And I know that I've had many conversations with many of you individually to indicate that that has not been done in the past. I hope that you will put an urgent matter on preparing for opening the door. In this shotgun marriage, all that you're doing when you pass the regulations is sending out the invitation. There's still a lot to do to prepare, there's a band to arrange for, there's the rehearsal, there's the practice. Don't close your eyes to what's happening to our city. I honestly, personally, think you made a very short-sighted mistake today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Howdy, Steve Donellen, 2437 Terranian Drive, Longmont. Mayor, city council members, first and former foremost, and want to say that the Jedi Master, Gordon Pedro, is leaving the premises. What an illustrious career. We all wish him, his wife, and family the very best. Now, we also want to wish our new city manager, Harold Dominguez, his wife, and family the very best. They will soon see that Longmont has open arms to one and all. Longmont's home rule strives to be a willing partner for the mind, body, and soul of all who venture into our all-America city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Any other people like to speak?
Michael Belmont, I live at 841 Tenacity Drive in Longmont. And many of you know me as a songwriter, as well as other things. I write what's going on in my life from my heart. Very recently, very recently, I wrote this song, and my wife is going to kill me for this. But this will be a little old time song. Papa was a good man, more than any, working more than any should. A simple soul with just one goal, and that is family's good. He worked the wells, was healthier than most men in their prime, until a rare condition took him well before his time. Little Jean fought valiantly, right up until the end. Her soul had grown far older than her tender years of ten. For with her last and gasping breath, she comforted her kin. When finally her tiny lung just could not pump again. But the wells keep pumping for the good of all mankind, to keep us warm with vaporous gold from deep within the mine. One little girl, one nameless man, a small price for our crime. To keep the wells a-pumping for the good of all mankind. You may not be a little girl or father in his prime. You may have peace and health at home, I'm glad you're doing fine. But in the backyards, in the parks of those like yours and mine, play a thousand little girls and loving fathers in their prime. Where the wells keep pumping for the good of all mankind, to keep us warm with vaporous gold from deep within the mine. If lives are lost, it's just the cost of the contract we have signed. To keep our wells a-pumping for the good of all mankind. For the good, for the good, for the good of all mankind. Just keep our wells a-pumping for the good of all mankind. It's for the good, you can sing it if you can, for the good. It's for the good of all mankind. Oh, we got to keep those wells a-pumping for the good of all mankind. Yes, while at last we best be flagging every spot that we can find, making sure those wells keep pumping for the good of all mankind.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Human beings respond to people who are in distress or about to be put under stress without their permission, without even their being consulted. And our city council is filled with people. I really do object to the oil and gas corporations being called a community. Communities are made of people. And I hope your friends, the top operators, do have some human capacities. I was very distressed at the stakeholders' meeting. I talked to the young man who was a driller out in Greeley. I do not understand how a human being can put toxic, heavy industry 350 feet from people's homes where children are. I do not understand it. And this young man, when he said, we talked a while, but his bottom line was, sure, I drove, I put it there. What has happened to him? And I hope that this council, made of people responsible for protecting, health, welfare, and safety, safety and welfare, or the people of Longmont, will take it upon yourselves to do some of the actions that you say need to be done at the state level, at the COGCC level, and speak out for us. You are our representatives. Yes, Katie, you are. Okay? No, all of you. There was a bill this, this session giving local governments more control, possibly. And this council declined to support. And so please, change that direction and make your actions match your heart, your conscience. Thank you.
Okay, it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Just, I mentioned this right before our executive session. State Representative Spencer Swam, Swam of House District 37, has asked for an audit of RTD and fast tracks. I know Sandy's still here. I would like for us to monitor where that's going. If I need to make a motion, I will. So I would move to redirect staff to monitor where that letter is going.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Shall we vote? Okay, that passes seven to zero.
The other thing is, of course, tonight, and Gordon, we're just about, right, about almost 11 o'clock, quarter after, that's Gordon's last meeting. And I've had the pleasure of knowing Gordon for a little bit more than five years. I have appreciated your guidance. You have been a mentor. We've not always seen eye to eye, which I always appreciated. You've gotten me to look at other things and another way of, another perspective, and I really appreciate it. And I wish you well in your retirement. I know Pam is very excited. It was a lot sooner than what I had hoped, but again, I just want to thank you for your eighteen and a half years. We had a really full house last week. I was really glad to see former members of council, former mayors, people who love you and people who don't love you as much even showed up. I should say, respect you. Again, thank you. I look forward to our lunch on Friday, and I wish you well. And again, I hope that you, as you have said, you will stay an active participant, resident, and when we're doing something wrong, I expect to hear from you. And hopefully, the lines of communication will be open as well, so if I have some questions, I hope to be able to just, you know, when you're not in the Grand Canyon where you get no cell service, I hope to be able to at least call you and ask you a question or two. So good luck, and it's not goodbye, because I know you'll be around. So thank you for your service, and I, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate it.
I would second that. I haven't known Gordon for that long, but I did go see him the year I ran and didn't win. I went and talked to him before the election. He spent the time to talk with me, was not an elected official, wasn't going to win, and he still spent that time with me. And that's just kind of an example of his character, and I have appreciated that. I, of course, have to mention my business of the week. This week, because we should all be doing our spring cleaning and fixing up, I would like to recommend everyone go to Budget Home Center at 780 Boston Avenue. They're locally owned and independent retail home improvement center, and have been here for over 25 years. Would recommend that you all go there and start your spring cleaning.
Councilmember Witt?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I also want to express my appreciation for Gordon. I'm sorry, but he, he has always treated all of us with respect, and even when we didn't deserve it sometimes, and took the time to educate us. And I think that with so many of, and he trained others around him to do the same thing, to help us. We're just tourists. Those of us who sit here on council, we're very aware of this short amount of time that we will be here. But it's the, the people like Gordon and many of our long-serving and aspiring long-serving staff members who, who we entrust the institutional knowledge to, and we do turn to them for, for advice and help. And Gordon was always willing to drop what he's doing and talk to me and, and give me his two cents. And I, I'm sure that he'll still do that, whether I want him to or not. I hope, I hope he continues to do that. I do also want to pass along a fun email that I got, and I think it's relevant this evening when we were talking about the airport master plan. I should have brought it up at the time. Since this is public, this is on my city email, so I won't mention this person's name, but their initials are T Z. And it says, "Hi, Katie, since our return, we've noticed better behavior from airport traffic, even parachute impact. Is it because, some say, the council is voting on the master plan Tuesday? Or can we expect a very appreciated good neighbor awareness by current pilots to be permanent?" And I said, absolutely, it's going to be permanent. So that was a great email to get, and just shows people can change. And I also want to mention, we had our Left Hand Creek Flood Management meeting over at Burlington this week. There is a concern at the intersection of South Pratt and Missouri. Residents would very much appreciate a four-way stop there. Because of the, the height of the concrete barricades, it's hard for cars who are on Missouri to see cars coming over on South Pratt. And many residents have noticed that, they, they feel that a crash is imminent. So I, I said that I would pass that along. Third thing, coffee with council. Mayor and I will be at coffee with council location?
Fifteenth and Main.
Fifteenth and Main.
Fifteenth and Main.
So, thank you.
I guess I'll, I'll pipe in right here. I really appreciate all the help that you gave me and all the heads up you gave me about things coming down my way, and I really enjoyed hiking with you, and I enjoyed shooting at the police range with you, and I'm looking forward to hiking with you after you retire. Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, and I'll chime in with my thanks to Gordon as well. You know, we sort of, I figured out early on with Gordon that we narrowly missed each other when we both were connected with Flagstaff, Arizona. And, you know, I, I was thinking that we would have been both in such a different mode then than we would be, you know, later, 15 years, 20 years later, meeting up again in, in Longmont, that it would have been an interesting contrast. So I hope that you get a lot of time in Arizona, back where you had good stomping grounds too, and lots of fun, and I'll be envious of you going to Have a Pie and hiking down the Grand Canyon, all those little trails, and, and enjoying that. But also, I want to commend Gordon, because many people that I know had also gone and sat in Gordon's office in discussions with him. And it's not only people that, that might be running for office, or whether or not they succeed, but I think Gordon had a very generous, open-door project for, project, process for anybody, member of the public, that would just want to come and chew the fat on an issue of the day. And I've heard from lots of people in my neighborhood over the years who have had great conversations with Gordon, and they've appreciated it, and have always recommended his counsel on issues that, that you need to listen to Gordon because of his perspective, and basically, that historical knowledge that exceeds the generations of council members, length of stay on this side of the podium. The other thing that I would like to ask, since it's late hour, I brought my whole stack of stuff to make a report about national eco-cities, and I would like, if we can't spend, maybe put it on as an agenda item next week to give you guys a formal feedback report of our activities in Washington a couple of weeks ago, because there were some really exciting things that we heard, and in particular, in the fair committee, there was an item that would, some rulemaking that would absolutely impact our city financially that I'd like to report out on. So if we can't just get that, would you mind putting that on, Mayor? Is that okay with everybody? We just do a small agenda item?
Okay. Sounds good. Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, Gordon, everybody's else being sappy, you know I'm not going to be. I hope you go from a mentor to a total mentor and stop by every now and then and have a good cup of coffee with me.
Councilmember Bagley?
I echo the sentiments of my fellow council members, not for the leadership, the mentorship, the patience, the cautious guidance that you've provided since November. I'm actually grateful for you for the 11 years before that, that I didn't have a clue who ran this city or how it worked. I've got three young boys, and a girl who's 13, but the three young boys in particular, I take great, great pride in the fact that they don't have to worry about lights and food, and, you know, I provide a calm, gentle environment where kids can grow. And that's kind of what you did for me, you know, so I appreciate that. I didn't have to worry about streets and roads, and, and having served since November, I now realize what an effort that is. So thank you very much. I sit on two boards, or I sit on multiple boards, but announcements, not copying you for the businesses, but just the Longmont Public Library is going to have a U-Blong 2012 Longmont Library Festival that's going to be starting on Monday, April 9th, and the kickoff party starts right around 6 o'clock that night. Website says 7, but I'm pretty sure they told me 5:30 at the meeting, so I'm just going to say 6.
They know you, that's why.
That's exactly right. They need me to be there early.
You're setting up tables.
Exactly. And the other board I sit on is the museum board, advisory board, and they're raising some... uh, they're raising some money to finish up that auditorium. So, uh, the, the support that we can provide, our museum and our library, uh, they would be very appreciative.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to, um, open this up to, uh, people from staff where the audience might want to make a quick comment. Pardon? Yes, yeah. I guess the audience already had a chance, so anybody, some staff would like to make any comments? All right, it's up to you. It's, uh... City manager, do you have any additional remarks? Sandy, do you want to say something?
By the way, Harold, you don't...
Oh, Mayor, I move that he cannot fire Sandy.
All in favor? We got three more days, right? So, thank you for that opportunity. I just want to say how much I'm in this, that little wicked look Gordon gets on his face when he's coming into a staff meeting and he knows is about to stir your world, as well as his dedication to justice, doing the right thing, really finding the right ways to say things that need to be said, in a world where sometimes people just hide things underneath the carpet. So, I've learned a ton, and I think I, I hope I'm a better public servant for having worked for Gordon. Good luck. Next.
All right.
Mayor, thank, uh, thank you on the council for the, uh, fine thoughts. And, uh, welcome, Harold. You'll, you'll be here next week. And the other thing I will say is that, uh, I hope, uh, each of you meant it when you said that, uh, you, uh, hope that I will speak up, because I will guarantee you, I will, because I have spent eighteen and a half years in this community, and I think it is a great community, and I expect to try to keep it, uh, that way as much as I can do. And I hope you appreciate the fact that, uh, you may hear things that, uh, I don't agree with you on, and, uh, I will still, uh, tell you so, and I hope you appreciate that. So, I look forward to, uh, retirement and, uh, having a great time in this community.
Same time. Any remarks?
So I did want to say to Gordon that it's been a real pleasure to serve on team, uh, and serving the council and this organization and this community, and, uh, I really did learn a lot, um, in my short time with you, and wish you the best in retirement.
This meeting goes now adjourned.